Okay, it is 6:00 PM. We are going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. I do have our... Call the meeting to order. We'll start with a roll call vote. We are going to be removing one item tonight from the agenda. Item number F under the consent agenda is going to be removed. And can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Walter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Woolridge?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Gleene?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Wall?
Here.
Councilmember Larson?
Here.
Thank you, we have a call.
Thank you. We'll begin with a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll start with call to the public. Call to the public is for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss nor take action on any action or matter during an open call to the public unless that matter is properly noticed for discussion and for legal action. We do have three requests this evening. The first is Mr. Jerry Raver.
Thank you. My name is Jerry Raver. My wife and I live in the J.B. Machia residence and Lone Star store in the corner of Church and Ruggles here in the Florence Townsite Historic District. I have already expressed concerns about the use of primary elections to make far-reaching decisions, especially with a seasonal population, as the Chamber of Commerce has brought to your attention. Although the state of Arizona may dictate when primary elections are held, the state cannot and should not tell us, the counties and cities, what the content of our elections should be. For future elections, I am asking the council to keep issues with long-term consequences, such as the base rate adjustment and the election of council members for the November general elections, when there are more voters in town. If the council truly wants to be transparent, you need to hear all voices. If it is important, people will respond. There is one other issue I'd like to bring to the council's attention. I've previously said the council needs to make a commitment to historic preservation. In front of you now is a golden opportunity. There are two national register buildings in our historic Main Street which will soon be demolished unless something is done. The town already owns the Q and House and could purchase the remains of the 1912 brick saloon that recently burned. The town could rehabilitate both buildings and set an example by following all the rules, codes, and preservation guidelines we as property owners in the historic district are expected to follow. Main Street does not need any more empty lots or parks. Main Street needs preservation and infill. The town of Florence could lead the way by setting an example. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Mr. Tom Rankin.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I've come to speak to you tonight about a service that's been taken away from all the citizens of Florence by this administration, is that sort of late waste at the transfer station out by Anthem. A lot of people in town were utilizing that, taking their trash out to their...to dispose of it. I was on the council when we got Rad in here. And they have one service a month. And what do you do? You have to bag it up, call them, make arrangements for them to pick it up. And what do you bag it in? Plastic bags. The majority of you have been with us when we went up to talk to Rad, and they told us that plastic is one of the worst things in the world in a landfill. You cannot get rid of it. I think now, with the amount of money you're saving from not having to pay for the bulk trash deposit out at the transfer station, now's a good time to get with Rad to redo their contract. Redo it to where they have two pickups a month to the people that utilize it, but also get them to develop reusable bags. Now, what reusable bags do we have? Well, you can have burlap, that's one, but you can also make a tarp bag. If any of you had been around here back in the '50s and '60s and you'd been out in the fields working with me, we pulled cotton sacks. I think a lot of you probably remember those. And they're made out of tarp, and they lasted a whole season. Rad could develop a bag that the people...and they have a...and stockpile them here where people can make arrangements to pick them up, put their stuff in, notify Rad when they have them. I'm just worried about the landfills being filled up with plastic. I think we all should be. But I'm also worried about the desert around here now it's going to become a dump ground as people don't have any place to dump. People are not going to spend $40 to $45 to go out there and to a land...a transfer station. I think behooves the council to have our staff look into that and get it done so that the people, not only in all of Florence, have the opportunity to reutilize those bags to get rid of their waste and work with Rad to develop that bag. That bag would save a lot of stuff going into the waste as far as plastic going into your landfills. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Rankin, your concerns are shared and we are going to be discussing...your concerns are shared and we are going to be discussing during this meeting some of the garbage services and options. I tried to find a nice way to say that.
Bulk waste is really a problem we have here. It's not only a problem for Florence folks, it's a problem for all over the United States. But when we went to this, it's what I was worried about, that we were going to have this. Now, if we take that, what we gave them, what you gave the citizens too when we developed that contract with Rad, and also the contract with George Johnson over that transfer station, now it's gone. It's just another service that the town's not providing to citizens again.
Thank you. We're working on that. Mr. Bruce Taylor?
Madam Mayor, and please the council, my name is Bruce Taylor, and I'm a resident of Santan Valley at 29109 North Shannon Drive in the Johnson Ranch area. And I would like to make a modest proposal to the town of Florence. I would like to see Florence annex town of, or at least the area of Santan Valley and make it part of Florence. If you did, Florence would go from a little town to a big town. Your population would increase by 100,000, you'd be probably 200,000 in a few years. We would benefit from the infrastructure and the services that you provide already to your people, but you'd have a lot more of us to share and get the taxes and to have the authority and the ability to help us grow with you as you grow with us. We would also get the benefit of your police services and the Florence police and the county sheriffs. We could stay part of the Pinale County community in government structure. But also it would give, I think, the town of Florence the ability to do things that future might allow you to do more economically, like provide electrical and water and public services. Whatever's left of Santan Valley is going to become your neighbor. You'd go from your southern border all the way up to town of Queen Creek. We're going to become an important bedroom community for someone. I speak for no one else except myself. My wife and I think it's a nice place to live, and we like Florence, we like Santan, we like Pinale County. It's just a proposal to think about that for all the things that would benefit both of our communities, I think it's a proposal worth at least suggesting that you do have friends in our neighborhood if that becomes something the town wishes to do. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you very much for coming and speaking, Mr. Taylor. And we always do have those planning...our planning areas that extend, so a good resource to reach out and talk to is Mr. Ben, and he is going to give you his contact. Is there any other member of the audience that would like to speak at call to the public prior to it closing? Okay, we are closing call to the public. Need a motion?
I'll make a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One.
Do you have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Mr. Joe Jarvis?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. This evening, the first item we will be discussing is Merrill Ranch Community Facility Districts Number One Budget for Fiscal Year 1819. We have gone through a lengthy process to develop the budget for the general government, and as part of that process was the preparation of the Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One. I have provided the official documentation for...the official documents from the Attorney General's office for this district. At this time, do you have any questions for me about Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One?
Could you explain the difference between the secondary property tax rate for 1718, the lower property...secondary property tax rate for 1819?
Yes, I can. This evening, I'm not presenting to the council for your consideration the rate, but it is part of the budget, so let's talk about it. At the July 30th meeting is when I will be presenting to you for your consideration what the rate...for your consideration what the rate will be for this next fiscal year. So, I'm going to turn in my budget real quick to that page. In fiscal year 1718, it was presented and adopted that the rate would be $3.25 for the ad valorem tax and .30 for the operations and maintenance. With the assistance of our contractors, including Piper Jaffray who is presenting this evening, we've analyzed what the minimum rate should be. This minimum rate will cover our expenses for this next fiscal year, just cover the expenses. And so that's why a rate is included in the budget for your review of 1.9025. What that includes? That includes covering the expenses this next year for debt and interest on the 2008 A Geo bond and the refunding that occurred in 2017. It also includes the .30 for the operation and maintenance. It in addition includes a little bit of a buffer of, I believe, $15,000 to cover an interest payment on a potential Geo bond of $2 million. That would just be an interest payment in fiscal year 1819. It also includes a 5% delinquency rate. As we know, some customers choose not to pay their bills on time, and so we want a factor for that, and that's why we've added in that little buffer of 5%. Staff is diligently working with our consultants in order to determine the most appropriate rate to present for this next fiscal year. So the rate that I present on the 30th may be slightly different than the number I'm presenting this evening. That's why we're not presenting this as an adoption this evening. We're going to wait until the July 30th meeting. But this is the minimum. It is not my recommendation that we go below this number.
Mr. Billingsley.
Madam Mayor, members of council, Councilmember Wall. This is a little bit different than what we've done in the past. The two CFDs have had the same rate for the entire time of their existence. One of the things that staff was challenged with last year during the budget cycle was they wanted us to take a close look at the history of the CFDs and the actual costs associated with those CFDs based on the issuances that have occurred over time since they were started. And we had mentioned to council on multiple occasions, there's going to be a time when the rates will be different between the two of CFDs because a lot of development is occurring in one CFD and it's not occurring in the other CFD. We have issued a whole bunch of Geo bonds in one CFD. We've had one issuance in the other CFD. So what's represented on the two budgets you see in front of you is a real audit by Piper Jaffray, our contract financial advisor, on what the minimum rate for those are to be. I wasn't here last week, but a meeting was held last week between our staff, our financial advisor, as well as our bond attorney, and I always forget the word...
Underwriter.
The underwriter, to determine what the rates will be. There's a number of things that go into that. One of those has to do with issuances that may potentially occur over the next year. There has been a request made by the developer to have an issuance this year. What I've asked Joe to do, and I've asked our financial advisor to do, is to set up a timeframe in December or January of each year where requests can come from developers in the individual CFDs for financial offerings in that forthcoming year, so that we're not continually scrambling. Last year we did a refinance and an issuance. This year we've done two issuances, and so we've held the rate the same because there may be an issuance. Before the 30th, Joe is challenged with meeting with that crew again and establishing what the actual rates will be to bring back to council, but it is different than what we've shown in the past because this is an audited actual number of a minimum instead of the rate that we're asking, if that makes sense. And I know I've been kind of long-winded, but I wanted to make sure that I was abundantly clear to the council why this is a little different than what's occurred in the past.
If I may, I'd like to also add additional item. Something else that has changed since last fiscal year, Arizona revised statutes have changed. There is now a requirement that the general...okay, so within our debt fund, within each of the CFDs, we have special assessments and we have Geo obligations. The general obligation fund balance, cash balance, is now restricted based upon the Arizona revised statutes. They state, I hope to state it correctly, that we cannot have more than 10% of the annual debt and interest payments in our cash balance as of July 1st, 2019. We have historically held the rate the same, and not surprising, have been able to retain a little bit more funding than the required amount for debt issuance...excuse me, for debt payments and interest payments. With that cash, we've been able to make additional issuances and help the CFDs out, help out the development. We are now required to use up that cash very quickly. We have two fiscal years and we're halfway done. And so that is one of the other reasons why we, as a team, talked about what would be the minimum requirement, and that's why we're presenting the minimum requirement.
Councilmember Anderson, you also had something?
Yes, I just would like to get maps of these when you present it, because I can never keep one and two separate where they're located.
That's a good question. I don't have them memorized, and I will work on getting a map. I know that there is a map available on our website that shows the differences between the two districts, but I will work on getting one for you.
Councilmember Gleene?
Yes, Joe, you said that you added an additional 5% for delinquency. You didn't apply it to the whole levy amount for debt service, did you?
Well, we have had some discussion about that. Originally, the number included here included on...it was on the O and M and on the ad valorem tax. We had a discussion last Thursday that maybe it would be more appropriate to just put it on, not the O and M. So there is a little bit of discussion about that.
I know, but you're not applying 5% to the total debt service levy, are you? Only a small amount, correct?
Yes, that's correct, only a small amount. I misunderstood your question, I apologize.
Okay, thank you. So if...I'm correct in understanding also. You speak my language when we talk about state statutes and things of that nature. So if we are receiving revenue for a part of a facility that was paid for through the CFD bonding, it's my understanding with that state statute that those payments would need to be applied towards that total debt amount. Have we looked into that with our recent agreements?
I think I got this one, Joe.
Okay.
Just for the clarity of those in the audience and those watching on TV, when the mayor says "we," she does not mean the town, because the town doesn't get any of the revenues from the CFDs. The CFDs are their own separate quasi-governmental entity. It just so happens that our city council is the board for the individual CFDs. So those funds that are collected are held within the CFD. There are a number of different accounts where the various fees go to rest, if you will. So as we talk about the state statute, they're now limiting how those balances and what those balances are to make sure that the folks that pay those taxes are protected from a tax rate that is set arbitrarily high to specifically collect money and go into those individual accounts in the CFDs. So it's...there's two parts of this equation. There is the part that relates to the rate that it's set and the funds that would be accumulated or attributed based on that, and secondarily, what to do with the balances that exist in the individual CFDs in those...in those accounts. And so we're trying to account for both and provide a recommendation for council at the end of the month that considers all of that in a comprehensive way so that you can make a decision based on not only what's best for the taxpayers, but to make sure that the CFDs are still viable going forward. Does that make sense?
So if I'm understanding you correctly, we'll have more information on July 30th?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
But today, it's kind of like when we approve a tentative budget and say, "You're approving this amount and it can't be higher than that." This is very similar. Piper Jaffray has come back, and they've provided a minimum that must be collected for all things to stay even with the CFDs. That will obviously go up if there are going to be issuances that occur over the next year, if that makes sense, or to account for changes in valuation that may occur.
Correct, but any revenue that comes in could be paid...used to pay off the debt at a faster rate.
It could be. As a matter of fact, we did a refinance last fiscal year in CFD Number One where we specifically did that. We used the account balance to buy down the debt as part of...we call it a refunding in the industry, as part of that refunding. And not only was the debt amount reduced, but the timeframe was also impacted by that action as part of the reduction in rate, if that makes sense? Interest rate? Yes.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from council? Joe, is there anything else you'd like to add?
Not at this time, Madam Mayor.
All right. Any member of the audience opening it up to the public? Anybody have anything they'd like to say on this item? Okay, and closing it.
Mayor, can we officially open the public hearing?
Thought that was official. I'm officially opening it up to the public. Does anybody have any comments regarding this agendized item? Closing it. All right, need a motion? Do you need us to approve it? It's not clear on the agenda.
So we need to adopt?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt resolution number MRCFD-1139-18.
I'll second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Need an adjournment?
There's minutes to adopt?
B. Item B. Mr. Joe Jarvis? Yeah. Discussion, approval, disapproval of the Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One, March 19th, 2018, special meeting minutes? Does anybody have any questions? Comments? Need a motion?
Did we adjourn from number one?
Not yet.
I'll make a motion to approve the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One, March 19th, 2018, special meeting minutes.
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Item seven, we need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One.
Second.
I did all of my agenda on a computer, and when my agenda was copied up here, I apologize, I don't have the backside. Can I borrow yours? Item eight? Our items...
We didn't vote on it.
Sorry, my agenda was copied incorrectly, Lisa. Like, I literally have two pages, I'm going to take a minute.
All right. You want me to bring you a new agenda?
Yeah. Grab her.
If you can grab me a new one. I have the full packet, but I did everything on the computer, so my apologies, folks. I'm not an agenda. I usually do everything electronically, and today was the first time I needed a paper copy because of computer issues. All right, so now we're going to go to...we adjourned from Merrill Ranch Community Facility District...
Mayor, I still need a vote on that motion. We have a motion from...
We have to vote on it.
And a motion and a second, now we just need a vote.
We did all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, back on track, I apologize.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Item A, public hearing to receive citizens' comments on the proposed final budget for Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two and possible adoption of resolution number MRCFD-2236-18, which is a resolution of the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, Pinale County, Arizona, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2018, 2019, Mr. Joe Jarvis.
Good evening, Madam District President and District Board Members. I had forgotten to say that last time, I apologize. As we had just discussed about Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One, we have the same information about Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two. As you saw in your budget, the number that is being presented is lower than last fiscal year. Main reasons, as we discussed, are because the Arizona revised statutes requirements changed, and this number is the minimum requirement needed in order to pay our bills, as they currently are, pay our outstanding debt and interest payments. And as I...
And as I discussed last week, I met with our consultants, and we are coming with a recommendation for the council, the district board, for you to consider on July 30th. Do you have any other additional questions for me at this time?
Does council have any questions? Okay, council does not have any questions. I'm going to open up the public hearing. Are there any citizens that have any questions or comments regarding this agenda item? And I am closing that period. With that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number MRCFD-2, 236-18.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item B is discussion, approval, disapproval of the Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two, the March 19th, 2018, special meeting minutes. Does there anybody have any questions or clarifications? That we need a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, March 19th, 2018, special meeting minutes. Second.
Motion and multiple seconds? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item 10 is?
Make a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two.
Second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. Item 10 is public hearings and presentation, Mr. Joe Jarvis, a public hearing to receive citizens' comments on the property tax levy of the Town of Florence.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Councilwoman Wall, my first comment is, I added an additional statement. Thumbs up for the statement. Okay. Okay. Cool. As we had talked about, staff is recommending to the council that we lower the rate this next year, and right now, we are holding the public hearing. The reason why we're holding a public hearing is because of the property tax levy and because of the truth in taxation requirement. The levy amount will be increasing this next fiscal year, and as we talked about, the reason the levy amount is increasing is because property values are increasing. And if we lower the rate, then we'll still be able to collect just as much revenue as we did last year in property tax revenue because of the rate, because of the increase in the property values. Now, as we discussed previously, how is this going to impact me as a property owner? Well, it depends on your individual property. Your property taxes may go up or may go down. That depends on, one, the rate that the council adopts, and, two, the value of your property. Hopefully, all of our properties are increased, property values are increasing this next year, because that's good news. But with that information, we are holding this public hearing, and then on July 30th, the council will have the opportunity to consider adopting a rate for this next fiscal year.
All right, thank you for that, and thank you for the addition and the notice. At this time, I would like to open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this item? Go ahead in closing the public hearing.
That's it.
Any member of the council like to speak on this item?
No.
Okay. Item B, public hearing to receive citizens' comments on the proposed final budget for the fiscal year 2018 and 2019, Mr. Joe Jarvis.
Madam Mayor and council members, I am pleased of how well we've all worked together this year in putting together this final budget for your consideration. We are holding this public hearing in order to receive comment from the citizens, and later on in this meeting, we will hold a special meeting in order for you to consider adoption of the final budget. I appreciate the work that you have done in order to provide guidance to the staff and receive comments from the citizens as to what the budget should be for this next fiscal year.
Okay. Any, I'm opening up the public hearing at this time. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak on this agendized item?
Madam Mayor, I wanted to take a moment to just thank the Budget Committee again for all of your hard work, all the time spent, all the headaches associated with working through that process. We can't do it without you. Again, very successful year, and we thank you very much for your contribution to this process. Those members of the public that provided comment, and of course, I would be remiss if I didn't thank all of the department directors for their hard work. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. It's like you read my notes that I was writing up here. Okay, item number C is our public hearing on an application received from Samir. I do not want to mispronounce this name, so Kasha, Pinal Food Market LLC located at 90 North Main Street in Florence, Arizona, for an agent change. This is acquisition control and for council recommendation.
Can we go back in and close the public hearing from item B? We do track when you open them, when we close, just to make sure we have it for the record. Apologize, ma'am.
Closing the public hearing.
Thank you.
Okay, item C, Ms. Garcia, if you want to go ahead and read that?
Sure. Item C is going to be a public hearing on an application received from, I cannot say the name, Mr. Kasha, Pinal Food Market LLC located at 90 North Main Street, Florence, Arizona, for an agent change, acquisition control, and for council recommendation for approval and/or disapproval of said license. Mayor and members of council, the Town of Florence did receive an application, and we properly posted the application. The application remained posted for 20 days, inviting comments either for or against the application. The Town of Florence did not receive any. This is merely for a change of owner agents, and the town staff is submitting to the council for a recommendation for approval to the state. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Is Mr. Kasha here this evening? And would he like to say anything if he is? Okay. All right. Any member of council have anything to say at this time? Okay, with that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the license to, I don't know, what are we doing here? Agent change, acquisition control, to the Arizona Department of Liquor Licensing Control for Samir Shaliman Kasha.
Thank you. We still have an open hearing on the floor, so if we can just get a closure before we get a vote, that would be lovely. I know it's complicated with all the public hearings. I apologize.
Closing the public hearing. Good grief. I apologize tonight. All right, and we closed it. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And this was our last public hearing for the evening, Mayor?
No, absolutely. It doesn't help. Between technology and not bringing glasses, good gravy. Item D, presentation by Tony Trifletti, Executive Director of All Aboard Arizona.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm pleased to introduce Tony. Tony is with a nonprofit group that advocates specifically for passenger rail. Very specifically, they're working hard on Phoenix to Tucson passenger rail and want to make sure that Florence is part of that project when it comes to fruition. Once again, a nonprofit entity. As part of that, they have applied for some grant funds and asked that the Town of Florence support their grant application. In your packet, you will see the "To Whom It May Concern" support letter. This is an information-only presentation. This letter was, in fact, signed and sent on to assist with the grant application. With that, I introduce Tony.
Thank you, Brent. Good evening, Madam Mayor, city council members of the Town of Florence. I'm Tony Trifletti, Executive Director of All Aboard Arizona, an organization dedicated to establishing and nurturing passenger rail in Arizona. Our key priority is the establishment of intercity passenger rail service between Phoenix and Tucson. We thought we could get a state passenger rail program started, and toward that end, we made a presentation to Senator Bob Warsley. Our idea was to take one of the cheaper alternatives from the $6 million ADOT high-speed rail study. For a price tag of roughly $1.1 billion, we could utilize a Union Pacific right-of-way between the two cities for 79 mile-per-hour intercity rail service. That's a lot less expensive than the $6 billion price tag for utilizing the median of Interstate 10 for 125 mile-an-hour service. Senator Warsley loved the idea. Unfortunately, we ran afoul of Article 9, Section 14 of the Arizona Constitution, which states that all revenues derived from taxes related to transportation must go to highways. Arizona doesn't have the wiggle room that the three West Coast states possess in spending transportation tax money on rail. So we turned to a private sector solution being implemented in Florida called Brightline. The Florida East Coast Railroad is a short line that runs through the I-95 corridor from Miami to Jacksonville. It's about 360 miles. Fortress Money Management, a hedge fund in New York, sold that railroad to a Mexican concern, but purchased rights to lay a second track on the line for 79 mile-per-hour Brightline passenger service. Fortress purchased rights of way from the state of Florida to lay rail in the median of Florida Route 528, which is a toll road that runs from I-95 at Cocoa into Orlando for 125 mile-per-hour service. The idea is to permit passengers to travel from Miami to Orlando in three hours rather than take the five-hour drive on Florida's Turnpike. Fortress, with that money, went to Siemens in Sacramento and piggybacked on California's order for the next generation of passenger rail cars. The California and Florida orders look identical except for the exterior paint scheme. Fortress also bought large tracts of land at the station sites in Miami, Fort Lauderdale, West Palm Beach, and Orlando. These sites were being developed for high-value commercial, retail, dining, and living space. Service started between Lauderdale and West Palm Beach in January and began carrying three times as many passengers as projected. Service got into Miami in May, and all eight trains a day in each direction are now running full. Florida has now asked Brightline to extend service from Orlando to Tampa on an accelerated schedule. We contacted Brightline, and we discovered that Fortress Capital wants to clone it in other corridors. I said, "Boy, do we have a corridor for you." We want Phoenix to Tucson to be their next project. Well, now Fortress and Brightline actually want to come here to perform reconnaissance on the UP line before deciding whether to return to hold meetings for potential stakeholders. They were supposed to be here last week, but Florida insisted that the Orlando to Tampa segment be discussed first. Right now, we are in the early phases of something that could provide fast, reliable passenger rail service between Phoenix and Tucson and bring new life and new development to the towns along the line. If this comes about, it will reshape the entire region. Thank you for your time.
Don't go yet. We might have questions for you.
My bad.
That's okay. Like, for one, we know that it's in the early stages, but what's the, and I can see it in, because I'm reading, what is the timeline that you're expecting? What are our plans? Talk to us.
Oh, we want to get them here in the next few weeks. If they like what they see, we're going to set up meetings with elected officials, another meeting with the MPOs, and a third meeting with Union Pacific and some of their players. One of the players is Rail Pros, a company based in Salt Lake City made up of old Union Pacific people, people who retired and went out on their own. They know how to navigate the bureaucracy in Omaha. So that's the big three. Once we do that, in Florida, it took seven years to go from coming up with the idea to actually running the first train, but that was their first attempt. This could take, we think, three years, once they agree to sign the checks.
Okay, Mr. Billingsley.
I say this often, but I will say it again. I think that Mr. Trifletti is kind of being coy in his presentation. One of the things that's very interesting about this effort versus other efforts that I've witnessed over the last 25 years with regard to passenger service is this group and their board members are very experienced in doing similar projects and have quite extensive resumes as it comes to these types of projects, and we're just lucky that this group of folks happen to be in Arizona now and is passionate about this. You want to tell them a little bit about your background and history?
I grew up in New Jersey. Born in Philly, grew up in New Jersey, came out of the Catholic school system, got a degree in chemistry from Drexel, which I never used. Thanks to ROTC, I left Philly to come out to the West Coast, and I never went back. I had a brief career in radio broadcasting in Seattle, a meteoric rise followed by an equally meteoric fall, followed by 35 years working in computers on the financial side, corporate finance of large banks and insurance companies. First Interstate Bank, Security Pacific Bank, and the second half of my career was with Blue Cross. When I went to Seattle the most recent time in 1997, I joined the Washington Association of Rail Passengers, which eventually became All Aboard Washington. We were a serious organization. We started and nurtured a state rail program up there, and we were successful in bringing the Talgo trains to serve the I-5 corridor from Vancouver, B.C., all the way down to Eugene, Oregon. When our organization really began working in 1983, there was only one round trip a day between Vancouver, B.C. and Seattle, and two between Seattle and Portland. By 2008, we had six between Seattle and Portland, two between Seattle and Vancouver, and we would have had eight between Seattle and Portland, except for that accident in December that killed those three people. Two of the three people who were killed were officers of our organization. We did quite a lot in Washington State. I retired, got bored, wrote a book, put in my last name on Amazon, and you'll find my book, got bored, wrote another book, got bored, and then accepted the offer to come down here as Executive Director of All Aboard Arizona. It's similar to what I did in Washington, except that in Washington, I did it as a volunteer, and here, I'm being paid by grant money. Here, we're starting from scratch, the way we did in 1983 in Washington State. Can we have a state rail program? Well, it turns out, the Constitution doesn't permit it, so we have to find other ways to do business. The only way you could fund a state rail program in Arizona is by drawing money from non-transportation taxes, like sales taxes or income taxes, something we would call the general fund in other states. And that's a hard sell outside the Tucson to Phoenix corridor. It's a hard sell for people up in the I-40 corridor who aren't all that interested in Phoenix to Tucson passenger rail. So here I am, doing what I did as a volunteer, and having a wonderful time of it.
All right. Are there any members of council that have any questions regarding his presentation? All right. Obviously, we were pleased to write the letter of support, and we are looking forward to being able to receive a grant. Our next presentation is a presentation by Greg Swartz, Financial Advisor of Piper Jaffray &amp; Company. Mr. Joe Jarvis will be introducing them.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Following a competitive procurement process, the Town Council awarded a contract to Piper Jaffray &amp; Company on June 5th, 2017. Piper Jaffray was contracted to operate as the town's financial advisor. This evening, we'll be the opportunity for us to present who Greg Swartz is, representative with Piper Jaffray, and for Greg to talk a little bit about his company. In addition, we're going to be, he'll be spending a little bit of time talking about the CFDs and what we've put together in order to determine the minimums. I'm going to turn the time over to Greg.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you, Joseph, for the introduction. My name again is Greg Swartz. I'm with Piper Jaffray. We have offices throughout the United States, and I represent the Phoenix office at 24th and Camelback approximately. It was our understanding tonight that there'd be, there would be the introduction to the budgets for the CFDs, and we thought it was appropriate that we present to you tonight and be prepared to answer any questions you might have about the budget, to the extent that we contributed to that. But before answering any questions, we also thought it was appropriate that we introduce ourselves to you for the first time since being brought on as your financial advisor. So it's kind of like we're the pilots, and it'd be nice if you knew who the pilots were before we took off. So to the extent that we can do so, we intend to do that tonight. So I'm going to spend a few minutes doing a kind of a brief commercial, maybe about 10 minutes, on Piper Jaffray, and then a few minutes on your CFDs to kind of put the prior discussion into context, if that's all right. All right. I didn't ask how this worked.
Push right to go forward.
Okay, push right to go forward. So we have five things and five agenda items in, both on the screen as well as in the hard copy provided to you earlier. We won't go through Section 5, the statine resumes. Again, we're just trying to build credibility so that you know who your pilot is. We will, we won't go through the executive summary either. That's just telling you kind of overview of the presentation itself. I would like to get into Tab 2, and I'm going to flip right into the firm overview. So Piper Jaffray, who we are and what we do. So we're a financial services firm. We provide services to corporate entities, public finance entities, and individuals. So we are like your Goldman Sachs, or your JP Morgan, or your Morgan Stanley, except we're headquartered in Minneapolis. We're the largest firm of its kind headquartered west of the Mississippi, which is fortunate because the Mississippi River is literally two blocks to the east. So we are, we are engaged in providing financial services to a range of corporate and public entities as well as individuals. We've been in existence since 1895, and we've been known as Piper Jaffray since 1895. We've been in existence since 1895, and we've been known as Piper Jaffray since 1895. The next page, if you can see it, it's kind of faded, but these are our public finance offices. So I represent public finance for Piper Jaffray. So I work with Florence-like entities throughout Arizona as well as throughout the United States. So we are located in Phoenix, we're headquartered in Minneapolis, but we have public finance offices throughout the country. We assist state and local governments, we work on utilities, we work on a variety of financings for a variety of public entities. The next slide shows you that this is kind of a commercial, but again, it's intended to give you clarity, give you comfort, that when we talk about CFDs, that we have some basis for doing so. So we provide, in public finance, we provide three major roles. We serve as an advisor, we serve as a placement agent, or we serve as an underwriter. When we serve as an advisor, we represent the issuer. When we serve as a placement agent, just think of it this way: You sell debt to one buyer, or one purchaser, or one investor. That's a placement agent. When we're an underwriter, we're selling your debt to could be hundreds of investors. So that's kind of the difference between what we do. In 2017, we did more transactions when you combine those three roles, advising, placing, and underwriting. We did more transactions in 2017 than any other firm in the United States, almost 1,000 transactions. This shows you data since 2013, but we did almost 1,000 transactions last year as an advisor, a placement agent, or an underwriter. I'm now going to get to the meat of why we are here tonight. So if there's any questions about Piper Jaffray nationally, so we're just a financial services firm. If you have any questions now or in the future, don't hesitate to ask us. We'd like to present very briefly, again, to build credibility. Why is this person contributing to our CFD tax rates? Why is this firm contributing to that process? So hopefully, this will shed some light on that. Within Arizona, we have what's known as our Arizona Public Finance Group, and I'm going to take this opportunity right now to introduce one of my managing directors, Nick Dodd, who joined me this evening, and I'm going to give him a chance to talk not only now but in the future about CFDs later on this evening.
Madam Mayor and members of the council, it's a pleasure to meet you this evening. My name is Nick Dodd, and I work with Greg and others at Piper Jaffray. And before you and before the public is just representative list of some of our public clients where we serve as financial advisors. That's the same role or engagement we have for the town of Florence. So you can see there's a number of local jurisdictions around the state where we serve in this capacity, and we've also just included some statistics with regards to how we compare with our peer competitor firms. On the following page, Greg had included some information with regards to our experience with CFDs. As you know, CFDs are unique. They can take on a life of their own, they can be challenging, and when you go to sell CFD bonds in the market, that can also be challenging because in a lot of cases, there's startup districts sold to a different class of investors, in some cases, non-rated because of the concentration of taxpayers and landowners, and so that experience is unique. Not all firms will participate in those types of financings, but Piper Jaffray is very active, and I've done a lot of work over the years in this space. And so hopefully, the message you take away is you're in good hands with Piper and Greg and myself and staff, obviously, based on our experience with other districts around the state, as you guys look to use these as a tool to move forward.
All right. Well, thank you, and I'll call upon Nick over the next few minutes. I'm going to return to the prior slide where we present various logos for some of the advisory clients that we have within Arizona. So we also do underwriting. We do underwriting throughout the United States, and we do underwriting in Arizona. But this has special meaning. This Page 10, or Slide 10, and all these logos has special meaning. As you all recall, 10 years ago, the United States had something close to a financial collapse. Several firms like Piper Jaffray went out of existence, okay? Bear Stearns, that might ring a bell. Lehman Brothers, they just disappeared. And so out of 2008 in that financial crisis, there are new rules within my industry that govern my ethical and moral behavior, okay, as an individual registered within the public finance industry. So when I say that, or when my firm says that we're your financial advisor, that now has new meaning since 2008, approximately 2012, 2014. I serve, and my firm serves, as your fiduciary agent. It's a defined term. There are now rules that govern who I represent. So when I say I'm your fiduciary agent, it has legal meaning. It means I can only represent you. My firm can only represent you, your interests. So I can't -- I cannot underwrite your bonds, okay? There's a distinction between underwriting and advising. Think of it this way, and I don't know if this analogy will work or not, but because this is the first time I've tried to use it publicly, but think of me as a real estate agent. I could represent both the buyer and the seller in a real estate transaction. I guess I could do that, but at some point, I'm going to be taking someone's interests in mind. So should I represent the buyer in this paragraph of this agreement, or do I represent the seller in this paragraph of this agreement? And that is identical to what I do on a daily basis. I can't represent the buyer, the investor, and the issuer at the same time. I've got to represent, in this circumstance, for those shown on this slide and for the town of Florence, I have a fiduciary responsibility to represent your interests. And so Piper Jaffray has a long history of separating advising and underwriting, particularly in Arizona. I joined Piper Jaffray from one of the logos up there, the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority, because there was no conflict of interest. I wanted to represent clearly my advising clients and then my underwriting clients, because an underwriter has two interests. Yeah, they want to keep the issuer happy, but they've got several sales staff that are selling those bonds to their relationships, investors. So again, it is very difficult, if not impossible, for someone to represent both the issuer and the investor in the same transaction. So that's why, since 2008, essentially, 2014, the rules became effective, that I have a fiduciary responsibility. When I signed that agreement with you, I am bound to you. We both got to agree to exit from it. We both have to agree to the terms and conditions. So I now must represent your interests. So Page 10 means a lot to me, having been an issuer for the Water Infrastructure Finance Authority. I was the Executive Director. I would issue bonds and then use the proceeds to finance projects throughout the state. It was very important to me that I had somebody representing my interests. Equally as important, Joseph has some guidelines coming down from him from the Government Finance Officers Association, both the national and the state, that says you ought to separate advising and underwriting. And that's what essentially Florence has done within the past few months. Nothing wrong with the firms that you've used in the past, but I don't have a choice but to represent you now that I have agreed to serve as your financial advisor. And that sounds kind of arrogant, like I agreed, like you came to me. No, we want to be your financial advisor. Let me make sure I explain that right. So I hope that little -- I was on my soapbox for probably longer than I expected, but I hope you understand that I take that role and responsibility, not only because I can be sued out of existence, but because I've been an issuer most of my career, and I have been in transactions where I'm selling bonds and I'm kind of scratching my head going, what's happening here? Why can't I get the interest rates that I want? That's my job. If you sell bonds in the near future, my job is to make sure you get the best deal possible. And it's not that the underwriters want to harm your interests, but again, they represent investors. They're selling bonds to their clients. I'm on your side of the table, and I know that sounds like an empty phrase, but I have an ethical and moral responsibility to do so. So sorry for the soapbox. I'll get back on. If I'm blushing, it's because I'm kind of embarrassed. Nick went through -- before I move on, is there any questions about?
So clarifying question with your company, does that mean if you are selling our bonds and somebody in the company that we're contracted with has somebody who wants to buy them and underwrite them, that's a no, right?
Right. So as an example, if you decide to sell bonds, whether through the CFD or through -- on your own, my responsibility is to make sure that the pricing, the selling of the bonds was fair and reasonable, that the yield or the rate on the bonds was fair and reasonable compared to market activity. So our job is to make sure that you sell your bonds as efficiently and as inexpensively as practical in any given market circumstance.
Okay. Thank you.
So Nick earlier pointed out that this, at the top of this table here, we're number one. So we're the number one, at least in 2017, the number one financial advisor. We represent all the clients shown there. Nick just joined us from another competitor firm, so we expect this slide to get even more -- have a lot more logos on it the next time we visit with you. But again, if you have any questions, comments, or concerns, either now or in the future, don't hesitate to ask. Page 11, very briefly, we have a lot of CFD experience, not only in Arizona but throughout the United States. Pretty consistently, we're the number one, two, or three advisor or underwriter of what I call land-secured transactions, CFD-like transactions throughout the United States, and that's out of more than 200 firms that are engaged in this. So we understand special districts. I think that's what we're trying to convey there. I will tell you that my first direct experience with CFDs involved a community listed here that's in the same county, starts with an A, but I won't tell who it is, where we worked on the largest bankruptcy, or default, I should say, of any CFD in Arizona. So we, as advisors, stepped in and cleaned up a prior mess. So that's one of my first introductions when I joined Piper Jaffray a few years ago, about diving in and trying to understand what happened so make sure it doesn't happen again and keep the number of lawsuits to the minimum. And I think we succeeded in that circumstance. So I'm now going to get into, unless there's any questions, I'm going to go to Section 4 and talk about Florence's community facility districts, if that's all right.
That works. Just out of pure curiosity, what caused that bankruptcy where you had that prior situation?
In that circumstance, there was a -- in Arizona, we have what's known as a Title IX authorization to be in the franchise business, in this case, water and wastewater. Florence has that grandfathered within its incorporation, that you have the right to provide water and wastewater franchise services, because if you think about it, both water and wastewater are essentially a franchised monopoly. It's a public service, but once you are the provider of that service, you don't have a choice but to provide the service. So according to the Clean Water Act, there's areas throughout the state, throughout the United States, Section 208, you have one wastewater provider for every area within the United States. You are the Section 208 wastewater provider in Florence, and likewise, you're a franchise provider of water. In the case of Apache Junction, did I give a -- I'm sorry. I meant to say it started with an A. Apache Junction's a great client. They weren't -- they were asked to form a CFD to provide wastewater service. They could not pass a vote to provide that service. So they created a CFD to provide wastewater services. The problem was, they didn't have a hookup ordinance. So they built the infrastructure, but there was nothing compelling users to hook up to the wastewater service. So they issued a lot of bonds, but they had no revenue coming in. So Apache Junction asked us to step in and help solve that problem. So bottom line is, it wasn't Apache Junction's fault. They can't provide the service, but they created a component unit of government that could. The powers that be that were involved in that formation never thought to require that if you're near, if you're in the service area, you need to hook up. So lots of debt, no revenue. Does that make sense?
Perfect sense. I appreciate that.
All right. So on Page 13, we've discussed with your manager and your finance director four phases to look at your CFDs. All of this came about within the past six weeks. Phase 1, we wanted to confirm the tax balances available for debt service, which we've done, and recommend as a starting point some levies and rates for the upcoming fiscal year. Phase 2, we're doing tonight, which is to present you the first time. Phase 3, we want to confirm the tax balances, confirm the assessment balances, and confirm past and future uses of funds. So we're in effect doing a, almost like a forensic audit backwards to 2007, and not that there's any problems. We just want to confirm and be definitive. That's why the guidance we gave to your manager and your finance director is, we're pretty confident that you've got the right tax rates, but unless and until we can confirm whether that $1 million in an account is property taxes versus assessments, we need a bit more time. So we're going to recommend that on July 30 that you set a rate higher likely than what's shown tonight, because we want to be certain this fiscal year that we got it right. And then Phase 4, as we have done with other CFDs in other communities, is recommend some ongoing enhancements, and it'll be clear why we're doing this here in just a minute. So Page 14, Joseph has already gone through a good overview of Page 14. There's essentially five things that can go into levies moving forward, property tax levies. I won't go into any great detail. The table at the bottom of Page 14 presents what the rates have been historically for CFDs and what the minimum, just to get by, is moving forward. But here's why, the next page is why we want to encourage you to adopt likely a higher rate on July 30. I'm going to go to this table where you've got the kind of the gold box, the blue box, and the gray box. Think of the yellow or gold box as the project box. That's the good box. That's where money goes in to build projects. That's a good thing. Benefits not only the residents within the CFD, but also benefits the residents of Florence. The blue box is the administrative box. Once you take on CFDs, it's very time-consuming to manage them. And the gray box is your debt service. You'll see some text up above that says sources up to 80. And what I mean by that is, if you imagine that this -- And what I mean by that is, if you imagine that this, this, the electrical lines right here, this is CFD one, this is CFD two, okay? So you already have two different revenue sources. You've got a property tax here, and you've got a property tax here. But you've got two property taxes here and two here, a property tax for debt service and a property tax for administration. You've got a property tax for debt service and administration here, two separate taxes, right? It's not one tax, it's two. Okay, let's assume, what's your name in the purple shirt? Brian? Let's assume Brian is a special assessment area within CFD number one. Congratulations. And are you the police chief? He's, he's special assessment area number two within CFD one. Joseph, you want to volunteer to be a special assessment area one within CFD two? And the guy that helped me start this, what's your name again? All right, you're, you're special assessment area number two within, okay. He has four revenue streams that come from him and only him. It can't come from CFD, special assessment area number one. You wouldn't like that, would you? You, you want only your revenue to come in for one purpose, right? For the, the benefits you've got from the infrastructure that was built for him. So we've got four revenue streams for him. You've got four revenue streams for Joe. You've got four revenue streams for him. Right now, we're at 10 on this side and 10 on this side. Distinct revenue streams. You have up to 80 revenue streams, because you've got several special assessment districts in each CFD. They're a defined area. They're literally something short of a political subdivision within a political subdivision within a political subdivision. Okay, so it just multiplies. I feel very sorry for Becky. She was the finance director that got stuck with all this. And, and the, the brain damage that was done to her, and the therapy that resulted from that, she's come out on the other side speaking like a human being again. So thank you.
She can explain it to all of us.
Yeah. This, this isn't a mess because of Florence. This is a mess because of state statutes.
Yes.
Okay? This is how it works in this state. You have staff dedicated in other municipalities that do nothing on a daily basis that Becky tried to do on her own for several years. You have one to two people in Buckeye doing nothing but worrying about those 80 sources of revenue and making sure that his special assessment, Brian's special assessment, is used only to pay his debt service rather than this, this guy with a gun right here. Right? It, it is, it is, it is, it is a mess, not because of what Florence does or does not do, it's just the way the state statutes are. And then you'll see at the bottom, there's 100, up to 150 uses. This isn't, this isn't personal services and, and benefits and, and gas for a car. That's just one operating expense. All those operating expenses, salary, gas, whatever, travel, is just one operating expense. I'm talking about, you've got an interest payment for Brian that can only be paid with the revenue that Brian provided. Does that make sense? So you've got 80 sources coming into 150 uses. So I, 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 I don't, I, I don't know how Becky does it. I don't know how Joseph does it. And I think Brent, the way he does it is he just asks Joseph to do it.
I need to make a comment. It's not that difficult. Very easy. Accounting groups, money going, coming in, money going out. If you know what you're doing, it's very easy.
It is. And if you have, if you have the staff and the knowledge base to do so, but I will tell you, you've done a remarkable job with fewer resources internally than most communities we've seen. So again, there's, you know, whether it be Scottsdale or Phoenix, they have four to five staff dedicated to this purpose. Buckeye has three staff, you know? It goes on and on and on. So you guys have done a remarkable job. So this is why, putting it into context, we're Piper Jaffray, we know, we think we know what we're doing. We told staff tonight, let's, let's talk about the minimum tax rates for these two CFDs, but we also need room to make the rates a little higher for 18, fiscal year 18, 19, to ensure that you can do what you need to do with these districts moving forward. With that said, we're going to recommend through Joseph and through Brent, between now and the 30th, that, you know, we're confident that you've got your minimum met, but we want you to get away from issuing a lot of smaller bonds into issuing fewer larger amounts of bonds. Same dollar amount, but just easier, fewer sources and fewer uses. And so the way to do that is to get, in particular, CFD number one back into, give it its ability to issue general obligation bonds, and there's a long horror story of why that's problematic. But we want to get you there, and that's why we intend to recommend that we, based on circumstances in other communities, we, we think we can work, we're confident we can work with staff, your bond counsel, and others, to get CFD number one back to the point where it's issuing more efficient general obligation bonds. So I'm going to stop there. Appreciate the time. In terms of future enhancements, shown on page 16, you know, Becky's absolutely right. You guys, it's pretty easy to do this once you get, get started, but it just proliferates. And what we would tell you is that we're, we would like to help you make this more, even easier than, than Becky describes it. So I'll stop there and answer any questions. Is that all right?
Does any council members have any questions or comments?
Nope.
Like I said, Becky did a great job, and anytime we have questions with CFDs, I know she was a wealth of knowledge when I came onto council as an employee and beyond. Appreciate your presentation tonight. Look forward to the continued communication. And, you know, just one of my concerns, just making sure we put it out there, is ensuring that whatever is bonded or whatever rates we go out for, we make sure that there is equality for our, for the citizens, so they can access and they're, they're being assessed fairly.
Absolutely. And we are, as your fiduciary agent, will do whatever we can to make sure that happens.
Okay, thank you. Our next presentation is Presentation F by Innovation Pavilion and Subex regarding cybersecurity.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, it's with great pleasure that this presentation is, is going to be provided tonight. At our last regularly scheduled council meeting, council approved a contract with Subex to work with the town, as well as the future STEM school, to create something special in partnership with Florence. And I promised a presentation tonight in terms of what that would mean, and I'm, I'm happy to have Preetam here, here tonight on, on behalf of Subex, and of course Kitty, who you've all had an opportunity to meet with, with Innovation Pavilion, to kind of give an overview.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Thank you for giving us a few minutes. I'm Kitty Colding, CEO of Innovation Pavilion. I'm going to just give you a very brief update and get out of the way, so that Preetam can talk to you about the work that Subex is doing. Just a few things about what's happening, what we're intending to be doing in town over the next few months, throughout the end of the year. We have the Cybersecurity Summit coming up at the end of this month, on July 26th, which will be keynoted and sponsored by our friends at Subex. We're doing an entrepreneurial Launchpad event with a fascinating company called Fire Within, which essentially teaches entrepreneurial skills, the ability to run businesses and create, it's essentially a mobile pizza oven. It's a wonderful program, incredibly skills-based, that, that will be a, a great program for not just the school district, but the students and the, the business community. A number of courses, intensive courses, that we'd like to bring forward to the business community, both in Florence and throughout the county. We use a term of art, crash courses, which is a term that Brent doesn't love, but the, the idea is to create a very intensive set of learning opportunities for those who wish to participate, which we'll be undertaking in the next few months around cyber securing your business, digital marketing, and helping entrepreneurs looking to raise capital understand the mechanics of that process. And then a symposium in December to talk about the latest advances in smart city technology and innovations. In terms of a few other overall updates, you're aware that we had our first teacher training with the Florence K8 teachers on May 30th. We recently launched, just a few days ago, the IP Florence Facebook group, which we're excited about, and we'll ask everyone to participate in. Even if you're not a Facebook fan, it would be really helpful for us to galvanize support and excitement for some of the programs we're doing. We're actively engaging and expanding a larger team of folks to help us bring forward the grant dollars that we're committed to bringing forward to FUSD. So we have a number of possibilities there, in addition to the resources we already have in place. Our friends at Subex will be sponsoring and launching an IoT lab, which I'll let Preetam tell you about. And then our friends at Melander, working with the town on a smart city project, starting now, in play right now. And then Subex, of course, continuing to work on the cybersecurity project that Brent has alluded to. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Are there any questions from council?
Just would like to make sure we have a copy of, of these programs and activities, so that we can calendar them.
Absolutely. I'll do that.
Councilmember Anderson?
I keep getting the same question asked, Kitty. When are you going to start building?
Oh, well, we're probably a ways out from breaking ground. I think we're still working through development plans and some possibilities there, but I, you know, I don't see any, you know, any permitting or groundbreaking in the very near future.
I thought the development plans were supposed to be done by this time.
Councilman Anderson, we're not, the innovation assessment is due this month. That was the, the first item from the contract and, and from the, the schedule as provided in that. And so we'll be getting that draft document, I think it's due the 18th? Is that right? So we should be getting our first draft of that document. There's nothing scheduled for them to break ground until after 24 months, if I remember right. So the first deliverable was the innovation assessment, and that's very soon.
Yeah, I, I saw a final draft of it Friday, so it's ready to go.
Good, okay. I knew, I knew something was due. Thank you.
I was just wondering where, you said you guys had launched new Facebook group. What's the name of that group, or how can people get connected to that?
It's the IP Florence Facebook group.
Does it look just like it says there, IP? Because I'm looking right now, I don't see it.
It's probably Innovation Pavilion Florence.
I did look for that too.
Yes. But I will be happy to send you the specifics on it, so you can hook up. It would be very helpful.
Sounds great, thank you.
Thank you.
If you could also send that to Mr. Ben Bitter, and he can also host that on our town website, so that way our citizens that are watching will have an opportunity to know where they can find that information and link up.
I sure will, thank you.
Thank you. All right. I do appreciate you coming down and, and giving a presentation again. And now, Mr. Freedom? How are you this evening?
Thank you.
Good, thank you for coming down.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thanks for having, having me present this, present what we're doing with the city of Florence today. So we are partners with Innovation Pavilion for about a year. The company, just a brief overview of the company, we're in the industry for about 25 years now. We focus technology providers to help different sectors of the industries. We work with private enterprises, we work with private and public partnerships, we work with institutions, and also we work, which is our predigree, mostly in the telecommunications space. We work with Verizon, T-Mobile, AT&amp;T in North America. The company's global footprint is based in five different locations, headquartered in India, but we have a local American headquarters in Broomfield in Colorado, in the Denver metro area. Primarily, our focus has been around niche technology solutions for different sectors of the industries, but I'd like to skip for, you know, for the purpose of the time of this meeting. Four main areas that we are working with, with, with the city, with the town of Florence, and also with Innovation Pavilion, is providing focused cybersecurity solutions. I think one of the things I would like to mention about here is, March 2018 was a, was an important month of two significant activities that will be probably relevant to our discussion. One was the Atlanta airport that got hit by a big cybersecurity attack, which was, which took at least a week for them to recover, and they spent about 13 to 13.5 million dollars in order to recover from all the cybersecurity attacks that they were, they underwent due to the ransomware, which got hit by their airport and other critical infrastructures. The second one, this March, I think the state of Arizona mayor, Mr. Doug Duckey, released a cybersecurity initiative, a team to build a cybersecurity for consortium kind of solution for initiating all the new, you know, how, the new ways to secure the critical infrastructure or the crown jewels of the, of the individual towns, cities, or in general, the private, public, federal, you know, government systems and assets. So one of the things that Subex, in fact, when we started with town of Florence, it was pretty right in the timing, because today we've signed up with protecting all of the critical, or securing all of the critical infrastructures, the IT networks, the SCADA systems, the, their water, electric, energy, and, you know, different other systems that belong to the town of Florence, from the unidentified risks and unidentified attack surfaces that are happening not only nationwide, but worldwide. So our work with, with, with the town of Florence is to provide an unbiased cybersecurity solutions to not only the existing environment of, like Kitty was mentioning, the city is also moving towards a cyber, or a smart city kind of a deployment. So what happens in a smart city infrastructure is, we have different organizations, different technologies that are coexisting within the same ecosystem. Now, that is very good for the citizens, for the cities per se, but what that also poses is a threat of all the unidentified malicious actors who are constantly trying to intrude into the cities and the city's network. So one of the big damages that some of the cities have undergone is, is the IP, which has been exposed, one. Second thing is being in the news for bad reasons. So Subex's cybersecurity solution for critical infrastructures work directly with, with the cities, with the towns, with the government agencies, to help mitigate and remediate some of these, some of these actions. I wouldn't get into the architecture part of it, but just to give an overview of how it would look like, let's consider a centralized entity that is managing different sectors within the town, within the cities. It could be utilities, it could be ports, oil and gas, different industrial manufacturing sectors, which can exist within the city of Florence. Now, how they could leverage a solution like Subex Security, how they, they are currently leveraging is by enforcing certain predefined risk assessment policies and actions to all of these individual sectors, and having an overview or having an, an eye on each of these individual security-related concerns and attacks. Now, when there is any kind of an intrusion or a compromise, how quickly are they able to identify and remediate or mitigate some of these attacks? So we have initiated a phase-wise approach, already started first of July to work with it, with, with Trenton and team, to build this kind of a system to not only look at what is existing infrastructures that require or enhance their existing security policies and postures, but also... also look at the new technologies that continue to grow within the city, and how secure the city would be, to focus around cybersecurity initiatives while growing their smart city infrastructures and implementations. So that's a very high-level approach. Now, how that could benefit the city and the town of Florence would be that they would be, I mean, I would be pretty confident in telling that the city would be in the front runners of all the cybersecurity initiatives that has been tied down from different cities and states in the United States today, especially with the, you know, with the team that is being built, the statewide team that is being built in taking some of these cybersecurity initiatives. We are pretty confident that Subex, the Town of Florence, and IP is already a step ahead in adopting this technology and adopting these initiatives to ensure that the citizens are secure, the systems, the assets, the entities which are part of this infrastructure is secure while we get into the next new generation technology systems. Now, a part of this is also building resources, building educations, building people who can actually get used, who can actually get a better understanding how the technology works. So for that, we're very happy to build an IoT-focused lab. So this is a technology lab, which we can consider it as a simulated small environment where we can replicate a smart traffic transportation system. We can replicate an autonomous car or a connected car, you know, application. We can replicate spot parking meters, or any of these small, specific applications that gets deployed within the city, in a small lab where we have people come in, understand how this works. There are, it could be within the school districts, it could be employed as a small, you know, summer projects, it could be employed as a full-fledged curriculum within schools, to actually understand and understand how these new technologies work, how can we adopt ourselves to act, to learn this and contribute to these technologies in the futures, in the future to the city, and irrespective of which industry they work for. So that is the center of excellence that we are planning to build for the city of Florence. One is focused completely around IoT and cybersecurity projects, which include all of the applications that I just mentioned. Second thing is to train, have knowledge base for the faculty, for the students, and also small and medium businesses who can be part of this ecosystem to test and ensure that their industrial, or any kind of enterprise applications which are being deployed are secure, build research and development projects. So this could be something that can be showcased to the world, showcased to other cities, other states, that what initiatives are being taken by the city, by the city, and by the public and private partnerships that we are taking, to show that how new technologies are being adopted, and what steps are being taken in the right way that can help us not only go towards a secure new technology development, but also have an understanding of the thought process, how this is deployed within the system. And of course, we also work with Innovation Pavilion and different partners who are part of the Innovation Pavilion's network, to build this and continuously encourage in managing new and new technologies that are being deployed here within the city. So now, primary benefits, if you can see, one side, let's consider this to be the city and the other side is the IoT ecosystem that is coming in. One of the things is how, what we look at it is not only from the cities, and we work with cities and institutions in the city of Florence, in the town of Florence, right? So the school districts, the education that is being built or generated through the innovation lab that we are building here, can actually not only be used to enhance the curriculum and as the, you know, knowledge base within the faculty, the students, or within the school systems, but it could also become a platform in the future, that's kind of a roadmap, I would say, that how this can be used to actually, you know, I would say, to become a leader in the smart city space. Say, for example, if a company is coming in to deploy some sort of a technology solution that actually goes to the lab, gets certified, ensures that there are no cyber threats that are posed to the city through the solution, and the schools, whoever is actually deploying the solution, certifies and attests that, yes, this is a secure solution that we can have within the city, and it can be used in the academics, it can be used in small and medium businesses. It could also be used from within the government to encourage some sort of cybersecurity initiatives with the overall collaborations that we have tried to develop, we are currently developing with the town here. We provide some of these applications as part of our deployment, specifically around the lab. We help them with the research kit. These are small simulated kits that get deployed with purpose-built and focused technology application systems that are available for anybody and everybody to come and test. There'll be user manuals, knowledge base, or some amount of knowledge resources available to actually go and learn and explore some of these, you know, some of these technology applications. We provide installations, we manage installations, we provide necessary training and support around this. So our idea, our work with Florence around, I would rather rephrase this to both cybersecurity and the innovation lab, is currently, we are evaluating, we are already deploying designing systems that can actually be integrated with the city's network, and also build the innovation lab in the next maybe eight to 10 months, to have a full-fledged lab that can be showcased and used by everybody who'd be part of this overall new technology innovation that has been, you know, taken up by the Town of Florence and Subex together. So that was a brief, you know, presentation and what we are working today. First of all, thank you very much for the opportunity to come here and work with the city, with the town, and help us, you know, enhance the existing security services. Cybersecurity is a very big topic, and how we together can build a cybersecure ecosystem. And I'm happy to take any questions, or Brent, if you have anything more.
Go ahead, Mr. Billingsley.
I recall back about a year ago, walking through the 21st Century Library in Colorado Springs, and walking through the Highlands Ranch STEM School, and a couple of our council members, Mr. Anderson and Ms. Larson, looking at me and saying, how do we get these corporate sponsorships? How do we get these names on the wall? This is how you do it. They are going to, through our efforts, put together these IoT kits and this IoT lab as a sponsor of our STEM school. Originally, when I talked to Preetam, he said, you know, let us know where you want us to put it, because we want to start on it right away. We thought about, you know, should we create some space in the library? Should we do that there? And immediately, we thought, no, if we want this STEM school to be successful, if we want to get excitement, let's get the highest technology in the hands of our kids and assist Florence Unified School District in being ahead of others. And to kickstart off this initiative, I'm happy to say that Adam Lucky is here tonight from the school district to watch the presentation as well, but it gives me great pride to say, Councilwoman Larson and Councilman Anderson, that's how we get the names on the wall. That's how we make those things happen, is through partnerships. And there's a second level to that. And Councilman Anderson's question earlier highlighted that. When do we see shovels in the ground? You see shovels in the ground for Innovation Pavilion, the more partners that they bring to the table that are interested in doing work in Arizona, and interested in doing work in Pinellas County, and interested in doing work in Florence, Arizona, that will be part of the Innovation Pavilion, because it's not one company. It's a group of partners that work on projects together, large and small, coupled with innovators and folks that are entrepreneurs, that make up the ecosystem that facilitates the financial model to build Innovation Pavilion. That's how it works.
Are there any council members that have specific questions regarding the presentation? I had a few questions that I just wanted to reach out to you. So when we did tour the school in Parker, do you have any ties with that, the cyber lab that we saw, for example? Are you familiar with that?
I don't.
They hack into like the FBI servers, you're familiar, right, Kitty? Do you partner with them at all at that level?
Not with Parker specifically, but we work with institutions around the world on similar models. For example, we have some projects that we run with one of the universities in Singapore, where we are actually building them, they're critical, so they have some decoy systems that are used in their military defense space. And they wanted us to build some sort of a decoy systems to kind of replicate their existing military defense models into a simulated lab kind of an environment where they can build the knowledge base, build certain amount of threat intelligence from a nationwide standpoint as part of their cybersecurity initiatives, that's one. Second is, we work based, we also work with them on different sectors of the industries, and public safety and law enforcement was one of it, where we kind of built a simulated model within the lab, where all of the cyber attacks and cyber threats that are currently exposed out on the internet and that are happening globally, is kind of studied and understood within these simulated labs in their network, within their institutions. And they generate a report and send it back to whoever they want within, in the government sectors, to kind of strengthen, harden their overall infrastructure. So that's the application they're using it for, and that is something that we see that it would be one of the, you know, key areas that we will be focused on deploying here as well.
Okay, excellent. Another partner, just to suggest that you tie with, in addition to Florence Unified School District, is Arizona State University, ASU, because they have, they have an amazing technology sector, and they're also looking to expand in Arizona as well, so this could be another opportunity to potentially bring a satellite campus out into our area. So just, you know, if you need a contact, I have somebody from the league that I can put you through.
Absolutely, I appreciate that.
Thank you. And then, one more question that I just had was, where it says Phase 1, Training and Execution of Basic Projects. Can you explain, you know, just a few of the highlight basic projects that we would be looking at?
I think, yes, these are some of the basic, so I have a list of a few projects that we have mentioned here. These will be part of the projects and applications. So, for example, we are talking a lot about neural networks, anomaly detections in the new technology, and how the knowledge around this is built. These networks are used in, used in different smart city and critical infrastructure applications to maintain their water treatment, say, to maintain some of their energy plants. So kind of an architecture that shows the actual mechanics and underlying, you know, underlying techniques of how these systems are built, how these systems are deployed, and the overall, you know, project lifecycle or the process of how this is happening in a simulated environment. So these are some of the projects that we will be planning to deploy. There are also other consumer-focused, consumer-focused projects that we would want to build, like deploy, say, a smart parking, or a smart home kind of an automated, you know, a small module that actually showcases a working of how a temperature sensor is working today, how a smart thermostat is working today in the home, what are the mechanics around it which is posing threats, posing attacks, how cybersecurity can be implemented within some of these applications, because these will be real-world applications, or real-world scenarios that will be deployed citywide in the near future. And we feel that it's important to have an understanding at that level to actually build and enhance certain amount of intelligence around it.
Thank you, that was an excellent.
Thank you very much.
Explanation. Mr. Billingsley?
One of the things that is important as part of these discussions and negotiations with the various entities that are part of the IP model, is trying to make sure that not only do we have a partnership that's strong, that can allow us all to move forward and to evolve in a positive way, and ultimately help our regional economic development, but it's important to try and negotiate those additive features as part of that, to Mr. Anderson's comment earlier, about how those occur, and the investments that are made locally. So one of the things that's clear thus far in the presentation is the IoT lab. But there's another level that I've discussed with Preetam as well, and that's my desire to have a honeypot located in Florence, and that's something that we're working forward on as well, so that we have a brick-and-mortar facility in Florence that's part of Subex's overall network. So this is more than just a typical contract. This is an agreement by which the Town of Florence is a partner with Subex in developing cutting-edge technology that can be marketed to other private and nonprofit and government customers in partnership with them through the IP model. So this is a really exciting thing, Mark. I hope that, I hope that, and we'll make sure we provide as much information as we can, so that folks out there can understand it, but this is really a cool thing and a cool partnership.
Thank you.
I have a quick question.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, I'm really excited that you're partnering with FUSD, and excited that they're going to be taking home with the school down there. How is this going to be implemented as far as in a daily practice with the students? And when is that implementation going to be taking place?
So we are in the initial discussion phase, where we want to plan and create a small, like I was discussing with the team earlier today. We want to start small and try to have the, basically the institutions as the consumers in the first place, where you understand what are the technologies out there, what are the, what are the industrial-approved standards or technologies that are being actually used, what are the gap that are present with the curriculum, and what is happening in the industry today, and how do we bridge those gaps? So that was the discussion which I think Adam and team and us had today earlier, and that was a very important question for all of us to answer. And we kind of hope that when we start deploying these solutions, we would probably, our approach would be to set up a small platform which can actually first give the visibility to everybody in the institutions, including the students, faculties, and anybody who'd want to use the facility, to understand what it is there, and then kind of design, how do we implement this as a part of the curriculum, as part of the services that the city and institutions both can offer to the citizens, or to anybody who'd want to come and use this facility, to build that knowledge that is required.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, are there any other council members? Since we do have one of our assistant superintendents here as well in the audience, would you like to say anything, Mr. Lucky, Dr. Lucky?
Madam Mayor, council members, I just want to say that we're really excited about the partnership with Subex. We had a meeting with Mr. Chris Knutson, the superintendent, and discussed potential curriculum advancements, programs for our students. We see this as an integrated, vertically articulated program that can get our kids ready to be in industry, all the way from preschool through 12th grade. So, you know, we're at the early stages, there's a lot of questions that we have, what we're excited about, the innovation that both Innovation Pavilion and Subex bring to the table, and I think it's going to be a great partnership, as this whole project has been with the town and Mr. Billingsley kind of leading the way. So we're really, really excited about it.
All right, thank you. Mr. Freedom, thank you very much for your presentation this evening. It's been very informative, and we are looking forward to the continued partnership.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, and everybody part of here, we would love to see you all on 26th for the Cybersecurity Summit that will be hosted here. And I think that is going to be a very big event, to have everybody in the Town of Florence and anybody who's attending, give a view of what initiatives should the cities be taking towards a cybersecure network or ecosystem, I would say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we need a motion for item 11 to adjourn to a special meeting of the mayor and council.
I'll make a motion to adjourn to a special meeting of the mayor and council.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll oppose, same sign. Item A is our resolution number 1667-18, which is the discussion. Item A is our resolution number 1667-18, which is the discussion approval and disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, which is adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2018 and 2019. Mr. Joe Jarvis.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. This evening, we are presenting the final budget for the Town of Florence for fiscal year 1819. After months of preparation and conversation, I'm pleased to present this for you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you very much for that. Is there any member of the council that has any questions or comments regarding this agenda item? At this time, I'm going to formally open up the public hearing to receive public comment on the final budget. Is there any member of the public that has anything they would like to say at this time? I don't see anybody who would like to speak at this time, so I am closing call to the public, or public hearing. With that, I need an adoption with a roll call vote, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number 1667-18, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, adopting the budget for the fiscal year 2018, 2019.
Second.
Ms. Garcia, may we please have a roll call vote?
Motion and second.
Aye.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Gleene?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Wall?
Aye.
Councilmember Larson?
Aye.
Mayor Walter?
Aye.
Unanimously passed.
Thank you. Now we need a motion to adjourn from the special meeting of the mayor and council.
I make a motion that we adjourn from the special meeting of the mayor and council.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We are going to take a five-minute recess break, and then we will come back on the floor. Okay, we are back. Thank you for that brief pause. Item 13 is our consent agenda. All items on a consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda, unless a council member or member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is resolution number 1671-18, which is an adoption of a resolution to the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, which is authorizing the town to enter into a grant agreement with the City of Tucson Police Department regarding the Arizona High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. Item B is authorization to enter into a contract with Canyon State Wireless Incorporated to provide land mobile radio maintenance service for three years, with two one-year extensions available, in an amount not to exceed $23,490 for fiscal year 1819. Item C is authorization to enter into a contract with Fester and Chapman, P L L C, for annual auditing services for fiscal year 2017-18, in an amount not to exceed $41,150. Item D is an approval of an amendment of Article 3.2 of the purchases of the sale agreement for long-term storage credits with the Central Arizona Water Conservation District, as documented in the June 27, 2018, letter of agreement. Item E is to ratify the election of John Kemp as an employee representative on the Town of Florence Public Safety Personnel Retirement System Fire Local Board for a period of four years. Item G is approval of the June 4, June 18, and June 27, 2018 Town Council Meeting Minutes. Item H is to receive and file the following board and commission minutes, June 7, 2018, Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting Minutes. Item I is the approval of accepting the register of demands ending May 31, 2018, in the amount not to exceed $1,525,219.17. Is there any member of the council or the public that would like any of these items removed at this time? With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion, we accept the consent agenda as read, or approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Item 14 is unfinished business, ordinance number 661-18, which is the discussion approval disapproval of an ordinance of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, levying the assessed valuation of the property within the street light improvement districts 1, 2, and 3, subject to the taxation of a certain sum of each $100 of valuation sufficient to raise the amount estimated to be received from funds for the street light operational expenses for the fiscal year ending the 30th day of June 2019. Mr. Joe Jarvis.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. This is the second reading of this ordinance. You, as the Town Council of Florence, are the elected board of these three slids. The three slids are not separate districts like the CFDs, they are encompassed with the same town council. Historically, the Town Council had adopted a property tax ordinance that included primary property tax and the three slids. This year, I have separated out those ordinances. So we're adopting an ordinance for the slids, and then we'll be presenting an ordinance for your consideration on July 30 for the primary property tax. This evening, it is staff's recommendation that we levy a rate of $0. The reason being that there is an available cash balance in each of the slid funds in order to pay for this year's expenses. I anticipate that next fiscal year, I will be coming to the council and asking you to consider levying a rate in order to collect some revenue in order to pay for future expenses for the slids.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Joe. Is there any member of the council that has any comments or questions regarding this item? There is no public hearing on this item. So with that, we need a motion with, following a roll call vote.
Make a motion, we adopt ordinance number 661-18.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. May we please have a roll call vote, Ms. Garcia?
Councilmember Hawkins?
Aye.
Councilmember Wall?
Aye.
Councilmember Larson?
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Councilmember Gleene?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Woolridge?
Aye.
Mayor Walter?
Aye.
The motion carried unanimously.
All right, thank you very much. Item B is a discussion and possible action regarding instructing staff on how to proceed on a transfer station project. After this agenda item was posted, Mr. Bitter and I had a conversation, and what's great is we have amazing options that were brought to us. So I want to say thank you, Mr. Bitter, for that, because you clearly worked very diligently on it.
Thank you.
And in our conversation, would you like to share what we talked about, or do you want me just to add that one little part before you start?
Maybe we hit it as part of the discussion. If I don't hit it, then maybe we can...
Perfect, that works out great.
Great. Well, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Directed at our previous town council meeting, we've come back and provided really three options, and kind of a fourth that we'll discuss afterwards, but wanted to provide options that the council could take in order to move forward with some sort of a transfer station service, or some sort of enhanced benefit due to the expiration of the transfer station contract as of June 30. What we've got here are three separate options, and I'll not read from the staff report exactly, but kind of describe what those three options are. The first would be to expand our existing relationship with RAD. Through a contract amendment, we could add on transfer station services. We could also enhance the number of community dump days that we have. Currently, we've had an annual dump day in March of every year. We could expand that to four, or three, or however many the council sees fit, in terms of adding dump days. We've discussed those options with RAD, and they're very, very much in agreement that they could provide those services. Both, open their transfer station in Apache Junction to our town residents to receive dumping at no cost to the resident. We're in a similar arrangement to how we've had before with the transfer station here on Hunt Highway. We could do similarly with the RAD transfer station in Apache Junction. The benefit to that is that there are expanded hours of operations over what the Centros on the Solid Waste Transfer Station has. There are Saturday hours for the RAD transfer station, whereas the Centros on the Solid Waste Transfer Station does not have Saturday hours. So that would be an added benefit to what we've seen before. It also goes till 5:00 PM on Monday through Friday, instead of 4:00 PM, as the current transfer station. So a little bit of an enhanced benefit there, although it is obviously a longer drive to the Apache Junction station. Also, something to be aware of that we hadn't really discussed, but each resident, as part of our current contract, the existing contract that we have with RAD, they can request an additional 90-gallon roll-off container for their home, and that's only $5 extra per month. So if there is a, I guess, a minimal amount of additional trash being developed at a home, that's something we'd encourage our residents to take advantage of, that's a great value for just an additional $5. That's under our existing contract, so that's something that a resident could call and take advantage of tomorrow. So that's really the first option, that all-inclusive package of expanding our relationship with RAD. That would require a simple contract amendment, and we would be able to negotiate that over the next week to two weeks, and have something on your agenda, as I mentioned here, for the town council meeting on August 6 would be our goal for that. Obviously, that would be very optimistic, but given the discussion we've had with RAD to this point, they say that they could basically open their transfer station to us within an hour. It's more a need for us to get that contract language in place.
Would it also be possible, since we already have a special meeting on July 30 for us, since they can have that within an hour of our approval, to add that item, once we finish our discussions this evening?
Yeah, if that were the choice of the council, we would have to ensure that we get our contract language effective, get an approved agreement from both sides, and get that back, making sure that we're getting a decent quote for that option. But we would strive to get it ready and prepared as quickly as possible.
Okay.
The second option that we have would be issue a request for proposals for landfill or transfer station services. This is a request that Councilmember Anderson, I know you mentioned in our last meeting. This process, we've looked at how tight we could make it, and we went and found the initial proposal, a request for proposals that was sent in 2013. That's what we've attached to your agenda packet, so we haven't adjusted, amended that to fit our current language or dates. But that's an idea of what that RFP looked like in 2013. We would amend that within the next week. Again, this is as quick as we can possibly go. Allow times for responses and advertising, and then review and place a recommendation for action on the town council agenda. The earliest feasible date that we see to have that ready for a council action would be September 4, at that September 4 council meeting. Then, the third option would be an option that Councilmember Wall, I know you mentioned at the previous meeting, which would be to reimburse residents for their use of the existing Centros on the Solid Waste Transfer Station on Hunt Highway. In order to do this, we'd really need to get some policies in place, and procedures in place internally, to ensure that we are, I guess, being consistent with how we're managing this program. One of the most important things, for example, would be to develop a form that a resident could use as they come in to fill out, and make sure on our end that the requirements of the program are being met. Along with this option, there are dozens, hundreds, really an infinite amount of routes you can go in terms of how much to reimburse. What I've done is really put about five options in front of you to give you an idea of what that looks like in terms of our bottom line. So if the town were to reimburse all dumps, any and all dumps, and what I've done is extrapolated actual data that we have for the past year, and then projected that forward using the current rates at the Centros on the Solid Waste Transfer Station. If we were to reimburse any and all dumps, we would see about a 50% increase in cost compared to fiscal year 2018. If the town reimbursed one dump per customer per month, then we would see about a 6% decrease in the cost compared to fiscal year 2018. If the town were to reimburse 75% of the cost for one dump per customer per month, we would see about a 30% decrease in cost. If we reimbursed 75% of any and all dumps, then we would see an approximate 12% increase in cost. And if we were to reimburse 50% of the cost for any and all dumps, then we would anticipate approximately a 25% decrease in our total cost. So really, as you can see there, we could go an infinite amount of routes. It would be really up to council to direct us in terms of the percentage and quantity of dumps that the council would want to reimburse for on those. And then finally, leading into the discussion of the fourth point, first of all, I would say regardless of the option that the council chooses tonight, we will continue to emphasize on social media and through our mailers, the availability of bulk trash. We think that that is an underutilized program, and something that certainly could be enhanced within our community, as well as the county-wide dump days. We had one on Saturday at the county facility, which I know some of our residents even took advantage of. And then, leading into the fourth option, as the mayor had mentioned, as we've talked about over the past few months with this program, we anticipate going out and issuing a request for proposals in the coming months of our entire enterprise of sanitation. So effectively, the RAD contract that we have, we anticipate going out and issuing a request for proposals for our sanitation services. Again, that is a contract that expires on June 30 of next year, we would be required to provide notice prior to April 30 of 2019. And so, as part of that contract, we could include within that landfill and transfer station component, whereas we could say, if you have a landfill or a transfer station, please include that component within your response to the proposals, and we would be able to negotiate that as part of our enterprise contract for sanitation services.
Okay, so I think we had a miscommunication somewhere.
Okay.
Then the only reason why I say that is because what I was trying to communicate to you was adding the option to communicate a contract with RAD affected immediately after council approval, to utilize their transfer stations, since legally we already have that contract in place, and we can add those services. And then, since our contract for complete waste, everything is coming due, we can put it out, I don't know how we want to word that, but put it out, whereas if it was one organization, great, but if it was two organizations, such as we have the transfer station just past Magic Ranch in Florence, and, you know, somebody else is the garbage provider, whatever the cost, you know, however that works. But just something that immediately our residents could utilize by way of the transfer station, and then have a plan for the future of the RFP moving forward to continue to provide that, because in our current CIP, we don't have that transfer station listed for, you know, billed out. And, you know, we did collect the money when we dissolved the public sanitation service. So I feel that we do owe it to our citizens to continue to provide that service.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I actually, maybe I just misstated what our discussion was, but absolutely, that is kind of included within that final fourth option. As we go out for the request for proposals, certainly that would include the element for transfer station services. We don't anticipate sending that out in April of next year, that's just when the contract effectively expires, as we have to provide notice in April. We anticipate getting started on that in July and August, and sending that out where we can allow for, whether it be one company or others, to bid on that transfer station service. And then again, keep in mind that the county's plan for the feasibility study for the transfer station on a county level should be available shortly. I know that they were reviewing a final draft last week, and so we're hopeful to see that in short order. As we see that, that again could be a possibility, depending on the timelines of the county, where we could partner on that effort as time goes forward here, to be able to have a legitimate transfer station in town that we could partner with.
Absolutely, and you've done a great job putting this together and adding in, you know, all of the feedback received, as well as what you've researched, so I want to commend you on that. Councilmember Larson?
I have a couple of questions. So first of all, if I recall the conversation at the time, there was something with the county that they had an existing dump station that we are already utilizing, right? Does anyone remember? That we were already utilizing, or we had access to utilize a couple times during the year?
I think there's four times a year.
79 or something like that.
Just to clarify, two different thoughts there, both of them correct, but two different thoughts. The county currently provides four dump days per year, and then we provide an additional dump day per year. This is the type with the roll-off container... an additional dump day per year. This is the type with the roll-off containers, and folks can bring their stuff down, and there's someone there to inspect to make sure that tires or lead paint or what have you isn't being brought in, because that's a separate process. But the county does that four times per year. The second item is, I've been working with the county for about six months on the potential to do a joint county-town transfer station that would be new infrastructure that we could both utilize. And as Ben just mentioned, the county wanted to hire a consultant and do a feasibility study to see, so that they had something to provide to their board to show whether it would be a financial benefit on a cost-benefit ratio basis. I haven't seen anything yet. We're still waiting, but we will be certain to share that with you once that becomes available, because we will utilize that information to see if we want to be part of that partnership as well.
So on that same note, when you're talking about option one of these community dump days, and you're talking about they'd be these big roll-off containers, whatever that proposal comes back with, could we not go back to the county and say, hey, you know, you guys give it for X amount of dollars, and is there an opportunity there to sort of not really bid them out, but because we utilize both their services already, where we could find sort of the better deal between the two and expand that service possibly?
Yeah, I think there is a possibility. Our quote that we've received already from RAD on expanding our local community dump days, for example, the one that we hold in Heritage Park in March, very reasonable and something that we could certainly manage regardless of which option moves forward. And so, you know, whether or not we partner financially with the county or the town, we certainly could have an option to provide additional dump days within the town of Florence.
Yeah, I like that. But, and I have some other questions regarding the option three here, and you're talking about one dump per customer and how much you'd reimburse. What are the statistics of how many customers are using that? Are they recurring customers? Is it somebody who's dumping smaller loads three, four times during the month? Are these four different customers that are going? Do we have that type of data?
We do. So we have data that basically every time someone goes or has gone to the Centros on the Solid Waste Transfer Station, their address is logged, their weight is logged, the time and the amount, not necessarily the amount, but the weight. So what I've done is gone back and pulled a few months of that data and looked and said, if this month were to be replicated under the current terms, the standard gate fee, so to speak, what would those costs look like? And so, that entails going through and seeing, for example, if a person is using the dump seven times in a month. And as I've gone through that data, and it wasn't just one or two months, I think it was an eight-month window that I looked at, but as I went through that data, I noticed that there are many times where in one single calendar month, we'll have a customer go six or seven times in a day and then not go back for months at a time. And so what it tells me, and looking at those loads, they're very small loads. It likely tells me that someone had a large amount of trash that was developed, or, you know, happened over a weekend, what have you, and they took many loads, many trips up to that facility. The downside for that, if we were to go in the reimbursement side, is that each of those small trips incurs the minimum fee.
Right.
And so if they went nine times in a month, that's nine times the minimum fee, which is almost $400.
Right.
And so, these options, as I've mentioned, you know, some of these that include the one dump per customer per month, would really be focused to try and make it so, as a community or as these residents go to the dump, that they are consolidating those loads to bring down that cost.
Okay.
It's a tough, moving target to hit, and these are just, you know, extrapolation of numbers that we have, but really the best that we've got.
Yeah. I would like just to see, I like a lot of these varying different options here. I mean, I think this isn't just a one-pronged approach. I don't think it's really accurate to say that this is the only thing we're going to do is option three in this, you know, this thing, or this is the first one. I think you have to take different aspects. Like you said, people only have cars of certain size. You can't take one trip to try to fit everything in it if you accumulated all this waste. So I think it's important for us to take a multi-pronged approach. So I like the options that are presented here, and I think that between RAD and the county and maybe, you know, looking at this reimbursement spread, I think we can come up with a solution. I like doing the one dump per customer at 100%. And I also, like you said, with the community dump days, I'd like to see an increase in that, whether that's through the county or through RAD.
Councilmember Wall?
My impression for item one and three is that they are both short-term solutions, that we can't consider them over the long run. Item two, I hate to see us rush into bidding out this service. I would prefer the newly presented option four myself, so that we do it right, but I would also be in favor of the short-term solutions until such time as that can be done right.
Councilmember Galen?
On option two, have you gone to state contract to research to see if there's any viable option for the landfill or transfer station?
No, Councilmember.
Haven't checked there yet to see if there's, anyone is listed under state contract. That would make it an easier way to acquire the services.
It would.
As far as option three goes, I totally am not in favor of that, because that's, coming from staff point of view, that's an administrative headache. Not only that, it opens up all kinds of different things that could happen under that scenario. One of them being, you're limiting people to the number of dumps that they can make, which is not right, because they may be cleaning up a big, large project. And then, I can just see things that you have not even foreseen happening. It is not something I would consider to put upon our staff to do. It's unreasonable.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
I agree with Becky on item three. I think that would be a nightmare to try to administer that. I'm for item, I mean, item three, rather. I'm still in the favor of item two, and that would be a temporary suggestion until we can get a permanent dump site with the county in place. So that would be my suggestion.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Well, on that, item two, the, okay, July 2018, I like that, but I like, I'd like to see if we could try to get the county to start giving us some information. If they hired a consultant, I don't know why it would take much, I mean, you said you've been dealing with them for six months, or what was that?
Mayor, Councilmember Hawkins, absolutely. We've been discussing this transfer station idea for about six months. I think they've had their contractor, I'm saying contractor, their consultant under contract for like three months to complete that. They are paying for that. That is their study. We haven't contributed anything to that, but we're hoping to get that feedback fairly quickly. And what we've discussed with them, and it kind of leads to what the mayor said earlier, is if we worked on this cooperatively, they would provide the land. We have funds in our solid waste account that keep going down every year, and eventually they're going to go away, that we could use for a solution that's more sustainable from the town's perspective. So that's the intent, but it very much depends upon their analysis.
But, and just for additional clarification, too, when it's going down, I think we started at like 1.8 million, and it averages about $50,000 a year that we were utilizing for the transfer station. So it's not like drastic, drastic. And I do want, Vice Mayor Woolridge, did you want to add anything?
I don't know, but option three, it would create a paperwork nightmare, as well as open the door for possible fraud.
Yep.
So I'm not real comfortable with that. And then if you decide to do that option and only let people do it one time per month, then they would be responsible for any other time they would dump, but it would, I think it would create a big mess for our staff. So, and I know that we're going out for RFPs pretty soon, so I'm not sure if we want to go through that process on a temporary basis already, I mean, to have to do it twice pretty close together. So, and I know it's an inconvenience for people to drive to Apache Junction.
Especially if they're taking home.
I don't know. I think option one is going to be the best for us at this time. That's just my opinion. But I don't drive to the dump, so I don't, I'm sure it would probably be an inconvenience for people that would have to drive from here to Apache Junction, even though it's not really that far, but it's not like going to the old transfer station. But sometimes you have to do what you have to do, you know, until things get better.
Where is the Apache Junction landfill?
So the Apache Junction is, you go down Ironwood, and then you take a left, and it's right just past Idaho Road on the left-hand side. It takes approximately 40 minutes to get there from here. Half hour from here, 40 minutes from the Anthem area.
And one other thing, if we did, or we get the report from the county, there is a possibility that there'll be enough revenue coming in that it possibly could cover our cost. Is that not, I mean, feasible?
Mr. Hawkins, that would be the intent. The intent would be to have something that's sustainable, that's there for the long term and can self-support. That's the intent. How that would look, I don't know. I don't know what equipment would be required. I don't know what type of relationship that would be. That's why we're waiting on the report, is to kind of react to that once we get that information.
Well, I'm just thinking because of, you know, contractors and different other entities other than homeowners use these transfer stations, I would imagine, and generate an income for the transfer stations, so, whatever.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to point out that this morning, I spent three hours cleaning up from the wind this last week in my yard. So I've got bags stacked in my yard that I can't dump. You know, I don't see driving 80 miles to go dump those. So I'll store them in my yard, and I'll fill up my trash can for the next month, you know, a bag at a time, to get rid of my trash. And I just don't think that's the right thing that we need to do for our citizens. We had this service before. We let it go by. We need to bring that back in until we can get a permanent solution to it.
Councilmember Larson, go ahead.
Just so I can clarify, too, I mean, I think this Apache Junction location for the RAD transfer station is pretty much useless in my mind, especially when you're talking about these customers who are using bulk loads and then not using it for extended time. They're not going to make one van or one truck trip up and back 40 miles or 40 minutes each time to go dump their trash. It's just not possible. It's not going to happen. So to me, I mean, if, to have that, it's all in void, but the community dump days, I think that needs to be increased. If we can also contract with the county where we're doing community dump days down there, where everything's still local, we still have the accessibility where you can take it somewhere and you can dump it, and you promote the heck out of it, I think we can do that. I agree with the option number three as far as the logistical standpoint of the paperwork and stuff like that. I think we could work through it, but I understand that concern. But I think, like you said, this is a short-term solution. I don't think this is something we should rely on long-term. I want to make sure that we also do have a plan, though, going forward for a long term, and not just relying on the county. So I want to take that control back with our own staff. I want that something to be in our control. So if they're not willing to step up, we need to find a way to do so. But I just wanted to clarify my statements as far as, I don't think this AJ plan is in the books for me. If we need to find a different way, whether that's with the county or with local transfer station, or even more community dump days here.
Now, I would disagree just on one aspect with you. Personally, and I did utilize the transfer station quite frequently, but what I liked about it was the convenience. So you'll probably notice if you pull my usage, it's more on fall break, winter break, summer break, because that's when I have the availability. So did I store some stuff up and bring it? Oh, absolutely. Right before we lost the contract, I think I brought 1,800 pounds, because we demoed the second floor of our house. Just carpet, Chris, nothing, you know, that warrants a permit.
And just doing a map quest, it's 32 miles, and it takes 34 minutes.
So, you know, that being...
Thirty-two.
So that being said, I mean, I am disappointed that we lost the service for our citizens. So I do want to immediately find a replacement, since we weren't able to amend that existing contract. I think that something right now is better than nothing, and having that opportunity, if it means driving 32 minutes, I would rather that than find somebody dumping in our desert, which we've seen before in the past, or dumping in the alleyways, which we've seen before in the past. Did you reach out to RAD to get a cost of what it would be to amend it for the dump approximately?
We talked a little bit about that. I would be hesitant to mention their cost at this time, because they haven't permanently given a direct quote. But I think it'd be more along the lines of what we're experiencing under our contract with Centros on the Solid Waste before its expiration.
We also have Waste Management, and we haven't even talked to them.
Yeah, I've reached out to Waste Management. They haven't returned phone calls or emails.
I think they have a dump station.
Mr. Billings, go ahead.
I met with Waste Management in person, toured their facility, and had discussions. It was going to be incredibly expensive to work with them. Not only are their dump fees much higher, but they have to reconfigure the site up there in order to receive public dumping, including building a new building and a waste station for that, because they're only set up for commercial trash trucks right now. So it wouldn't be an immediate valuable option, and it would be very expensive.
Okay. So is there any member of the audience that would like to speak on this matter? Mr. Rankin, come on up.
I agree with number three. It would be a headache and a nightmare for your town staff. Maybe a solution could be that the land over behind, at the end of Willow, in Ruggles, a temporary transfer station be built there for the citizens of the town that can all be lumped in one spot and picked up at one time, either by rollout containers or using a, what do you call it, a tractor with a scoop on it, to pick it up and put it in a container, whatever it takes there. That's logical until you can come up with a solution to it, to have it there. Now, I talked to Brent, and he talked about the county and them working together on it. And I think you said the county was looking out somewhere near Addisville, or their Addisville place. The thing we have to worry about there now is the direction of the north-south corridor. Now, if the county goes out there and puts up another transfer station or whatever, and it goes in the direction of where the north-south corridor goes, and it's kind of defeating our purpose of getting the direction for the north-south corridor. So to me, by putting in a temporary transfer station here, until we can come up with a permanent solution, is going to help everybody. The landfill at Apache Junction, they're on Baseline Road. RAD's on Baseline. And if you take a trailer and you're pulling it down the freeway, you're not going to be pulling that trailer 65, 70 miles an hour if you've got a whole bunch of trash on it. You've got to tar it, you've got to tie it down, and so forth as that. But your speed limit is going to be down to, you know, 50, 55. And it does take a long time to go there. I go there quite often, Apache Junction. And Highway Patrol does work that area pretty good. They haven't got me yet, but just, you knock on wood. But a temporary station right over here, where the people can come in from Anthem, they could get it from here, they could come from Florence Gardens, and we could watch it. Now, the one thing you have to watch out is your commercial people that do lawns, because the way it was set up was for the residents of Florence, not the commercial people doing business, but for the residents to do... people doing business, but for the residents to dump there. And that would be the one, one thing you'd have to watch here, because it would be convenient for the people, and so forth as that. So that, you know, that's something that would have to be watched. And it could be periodically checked, and so forth as that. But to me, that would be your solution to, at this point, until you can come up with a permanent solution on a transfer station.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to comment from the audience? Okay, so it sounds, you know, we've had a great discussion here, and I, I see, you know, staff recommends that Town Council approve one of the following options discussed below. I want to challenge staff to come back to us at either July thirtieth or the first meeting of August. I'd like to put out there, you know, the, the amendment for the Rad Transfer Station, as well as to have an RFP put out for services to include the transfer station. I'd also, I appreciate Mr. Rankin's comments, bring back that as well. What is the feasibility of that? But I want one of them to be voted on at the next council meeting, to move forward to be able to provide those services for our citizens that we promised them back in two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, thirteen, fourteen?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Mayor, could I ask for a little bit of clarity on this? You're, you're saying the first, bring back the first option?
Bring back, it's not the first option. It's kind of the first option. It's that fourth one that we talked about. Specific verbiage would be amend to add the Rad Transfer Station, where you can use it at any time that they're open, Monday through Friday and Saturdays, as well as to have the RFP for services to include the transfer station, considering that the contract is up and we're going to be starting that process anyhow.
I still think that we should go after the RFP at the existing site.
Becky, how do you feel?
I agree with that. The one thing I also would recommend, I do like Mr. Rankin's suggestion, is maybe there's an alternative place instead of Willow. Is there any room anywhere else, maybe at the South Plant?
Fourth Plant.
Where it would be much easier for people to come down Plant Road and dump there, instead of coming through town and dumping on Willow? Because that's going to create some issues with trash falling out and all of that. So I don't know if there's any space there or not, but I do know we own land down there.
And, and Mayor, Councilmember Gleene, rest of the council, I guess, as well, since we're having this discussion, we have talked about that option with Rad specifically, about them perhaps putting a transfer station, a temporary transfer station, at one of our facilities. While we didn't get the exact costs, the difficulty of it is, is having it manned, and the costs associated with manned. We don't necessarily have staff extra that can sit all day and ensure that the, the facility is manned appropriately to ensure that there are no illegal dumping going on at the transfer station. And so we talked with Rad about them perhaps providing an employee to do that. Again, the difficulty just comes back to that cost. It was tremendously expensive for them to effectively start up an operation and, and do that. A pseudo-alternative to that that we discussed with them was really putting a roll-off in the, in the community where it'd be behind a fenced gate, and we could effectively open it up at the times of our convenience. And again, the difficulty with that was just finding the manpower to, to man that site and ensure that we're not having commercial dumping or, or dumping that's outside of our existing rules.
Can I throw out a suggestion? Considering we already have staff here, if that is, that sounds wonderful, by the way. And considering we already have staff here that mans the front desk, because I come in and pay my bills every now and then when I don't want to mail it in. Can't they show their bill, get a key, go take care of it, and bring it back? Maybe that won't work. People aren't, yeah.
We need somebody-
Do we know where Coolidge takes? Do they have access to a transfer station? Maybe we can partner with them. I know they have Rad Services over there as well.
We also, I personally met with Coolidge to talk about transfer station ideas, and was hoping that they would work with us on the transfer station with the county. And they said no. They currently have collections, and then it is trucked to Rad's dump that's down south. I want to say Picacho. So they weren't interested in working with us on the transfer station, at least at that time. And that was shortly after they adopted their most recent agreement with Rad, which essentially they used our agreement. And as a longtime solid waste provider, they're super excited about the term that has the bulk dump once a month, and they feel like that's the solution to their problem. So we're having discussions that are over and above the one bulk day a month dump, which most, most cities and towns don't have. So that, that's something we provide to folks. This is going above and beyond that.
If, how about, you know, if, if we did a temporary thing like Mr. Rankin was talking about, if we just did it one day a week, to where we had an employee there for, let's say, four hours, and we publicize that in our utility bills, so everybody, educate everybody to know what day of the week, do it one day a week, for four hours or six hours. That way, we'd have a person there to look at the load, make sure that they're not, you know, that they, they're legitimate, you know, a legitimate utility user.
I, I, I see what you're saying, but the problem with that, too, is again, you're limiting somebody to, you know, one specific day a week in a four-hour block.
Well, you know, I mean, we can only make it, I'm just trying to come up with a solution if, you know, it's, we're never going to get it perfect for everybody. I mean-
Well, we thought I had it perfect for everybody.
We did.
Yes, but my understanding is, they, they broke the contract with us, right? Or am I wrong?
No.
No, the, the contract didn't get broken. What happened is the contract expired, and it wasn't communicated to council early enough that it was going to be expired, and the decision was made that we just weren't going to renew it without council directing that decision.
Okay, so would it cost us more to renew it and be done with it? I mean, what's-
I think we had to do it because you had that five-year window already, so it had to go back out for bid, right?
So yes, we can go back out to bid. There's no guarantee that the current provider would be the low bidder with respect to that, but we can go back out to bid. There's no guarantee that the price would be the same as we got in the past either. It could be lower. It could be higher. It could be the same provider, it could be a different provider.
That's essentially option number two, is what, that would be a request for a proposal, where they could come out and rebid.
Correct.
I would suggest that we go out for bid, and, you know, because we aren't going to have those answers back until-
September?
September the fourth, and we can look at the alternatives in the meantime.
I'll support that.
I think that you're, I think you're on to something there, John. I, I like the request for proposal, as well as maybe we talk about manned hours and having something here local, where people could bring something in a set amount of time. I think this is something we could continue that discussion, what, where it could be, what staff could man it, and stuff like that. But I think that is a good temporary until we jump to September, where we could have a more solid conversation.
Make that a motion?
I like that. John, I'll let you make that motion.
I add just one comment-
Yes, ma'am.
-if we vote. Over the years, as we drive down Hunt Highway to the Sheriff's Substation, we have seen a cyclone fence enclosure that initially started out with two or three dumpsters. And now I notice that they have expand, moved and expanded that enclosure to have a total of eight dumpsters within an unmanned cyclone fence that is locked at night and on week, I don't know if it's weekends, but it's, it's locked at certain times when they don't want people to use it. But it's open without any monitoring or any, any manpower required, and people can take whatever they want there. I'm not suggesting that our residents use that facility, but it, you know, it could be a model for a temporary solution within town limits.
Is that legal? Who owns it?
It's a Penal County site.
Yeah, it's a Penal County. It's next to the Sheriff's Substation.
Well, yeah, but then you, you could have contractors and stuff going out there, you know, using it, and they could be dumping anything in there if there's, if there's nobody there regulating it.
I'd like to make a motion that we issue a request proposal for a landfill service, and if you want to say this is temporary, we can say it's a temporary service, and give us until September the fourth to review other options, and have staff come back with other options to possibly either go in with the county, maybe they'll have an answer, or follow Mr. Rankin's suggestion that we put in our own site within the town.
I'll second you. Motion in a second? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Motion carries.
Please.
Okay.
New business.
Fifteen A, new business. Discussion approval, disapproval of a design services agreement with J2 Engineering and Environmental Design for Post Imbute Preserve Project in an amount not to exceed one hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Mayor and council, before you is a professional services contract for design services for, with J2 Engineering and Environmental Design, so we can take the next step in moving forward with the Post Imbute project. This is the next step. We've already started our cultural, biological, and environmental design, or surveys, and this design portion kind of coincides with that. So as we're doing those cultural and biological and environmental things, we're not designing something in an area that we might not be able to develop down the road. So this is the, the next step that BLM requires as we move forward with this project, and it's, just kind of like I said, the next step. We're ready to go. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any members of council have any questions regarding this item? Councilmember Wall?
Aye. Go ahead.
What is the timeline for the design?
I believe we've allocated about nine months for the thirty percent design, so it kind of goes along with what we're hoping to do, where we finish up in early spring as far as the cultural, biological, and environmental surveys and the thirty percent design process.
Councilmember Anderson?
And my question is, the railroad track, how are you going to get over or under the railroad track?
The railroad track, as the design goes right now, or the preliminary conceptual design, would be an accurate crossing further to the west of the Post Imbute, current Post Imbute. And that would be along with some other projects that are moving forward down the road.
So that would be a pretty expensive item to do that.
Well, I believe we're working on that with some of our partners.
Okay.
Mr. Billingsley?
Mayor, Councilmember Anderson, we've already met with the Corporation Commission, with the railroad, and with Southwest Value Partners regarding that solution, and have formulated a plan forward.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions? With that, we need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion for approval of the design service agreement with J2 Engineering and Environmental Design for the Post Imbute Preserve Project in amount not to exceed one hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and forty-eight dollars.
I'll second.
Motion in a second? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Item B is discussion approval, disapproval to enter into a contract with Holbrook Asphalt Corporation, using the Cooperative Contract through the City of Mesa Contract 2016162 for a proposal amount of two hundred and eighty-one thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty-five cents with a contingency of forty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-two cents for a not-to-exceed amount of three hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and twenty-seven cents. Mr. Chris Alice.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Over the last three years approximately, we have been using the HA5 product. I think we've done now a total of four projects. We did two in one fiscal year at one point, and we've been very happy with their service. We've been following up with their service representatives over last year's hiccups, and made sure that we rectified any problems out in the field, any cleanup that needed to be done, and we believe all those audits have been performed, and people have been happy with the product. With that said, again, we provided a map. We've been requested previously by council to provide a graphic. We provided a graphic in the council packet on what units we're doing this year, working our way through, and it would be, I think it's approximately page eight in your handout, and it's units twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-five, and twenty-nine, as well as American Anthem, Anthem, American Way, Anthem Way, and Constitution Way. And then we also have units fourteen, twenty-three, and twenty-one. So a very aggressive year for us this year in Anthem for the HA5 product.
All right.
With that, are there any questions?
What, what's the schedule on this? Is it all to be done by the end of next fiscal year?
No, sir. We are, one of the, one of the projects, excuse me for not knowing exactly which one it is, one of the actual projects is right in front of the school, so we've been working with the school and the provider to do it at a time when school is not in session, which I think is the second week of September, when they're on break. So we've already scheduled all the work.
Last week of September, first week of October. Just helping you.
Yep. That's when the work is scheduled.
Yeah, but what about the other exhibits? You know, you, you've got all the different units. My question is, when's it going to get done?
When is the work going to get done?
Yes. When's, when's all this going to get paid?
I believe it was just said it was scheduled for late September.
Okay, all right.
So I don't know if it's seven days' worth of work, eight days' worth of work. I can get an email back to you on when, how many days they propose to schedule the work, but it's typically less than five working days that they do all these projects.
They'll, they'll get them all done in five days?
I don't believe this much work. I'm saying typically. So I'll, I'm actually meeting with the contractor next week as a follow-up. I will get a complete schedule as best as possible on there. They, they blank out a window for us, assuming the council's going to approve these items, and then we get them scheduled officially after that. So right now, we have our window scheduled so that we do not affect the school in Anthem, because one of the roads is right there. We had originally made a decision to do this earlier in the year, but because of the complexities of the school, we decided to push it back, I think, approximately a month or two.
It'll be done before the end of the year, in other words. It will be done in eighteen, right?
Yes, sir. That is one of the schedules to be done.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to enter into a contract with Holbrook Asphalt Company, using the Cooperative Contract through the City of Mesa Contract Number 2016162, to clean, prepare, and install HA5 High Density Mineral Bond Advanced Performance Pavement Preservation Treatment. It will also include a five-year warranty pavement markings and traffic control in an amount not to exceed three hundred and twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Second. Motion in a second? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Same sign? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item C is discussion approval, disapproval of entering into an employment agreement with the town manager, Brent Billingsley. Mr. Clifford Matisse?
Thank you, Mayor and Vice Mayor, members of the council. Before you tonight is the extension of the town manager's contract. Brent Billingsley has served the town the last two and a half years. His current contract expires December thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. There's a desire by the parties to extend that contract. The highlight of the terms, the change in substance from the existing contract would be to add an additional four years onto the contract. So from this date, today, it would be another four and a half years. Increase the salary approximately ten point eight percent, which is in line with the market adjustment that I believe sixty-four other town employees experienced for this next fiscal year, as a separate issue from the five percent merit increase. Additionally, there would be twenty days of vacation time that Mr. Billingsley could accrue during the year, and with a maximum cap of four hundred hours, which is consistent with the length of service of employees. of employees. I don't remember the exact, but I think it's 10-plus years of service. And, and he has, you know, been a public employee for quite some time, so that would be consistent with that item. I do note that the, the draft that was provided to the council had a couple of small typos. I'll just note them for the record, so we have that in the record. In section, in section 8, 3, I'm sorry, 8.5, there's a, where it says "reach" at the beginning of the sentence, it should be "breach." And there's a reference to a section 20D and/or E, and that should be 20 subparenths 4 and/or parenths 5. In section 9, the second paragraph, there's a, the word "B", "BE" is crossed out, and that shouldn't be crossed, to have it. In section 11, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 lines down, there's a date of June 2018 in the draft you were given that should read June 2022. And to be consistent with the end date, which would be, the new end date under this extended contract would be December 31st, 2022. And the idea with that would be that the, the council and the manager would attempt to negotiate a contract, as you've done in this case, six months prior to the end of his contract. So both parties are taking a proactive approach to extending his contract. The, now I can't remember if I mentioned this increase in salary, but I think the amount is $151,329.
That's the total amount, not his?
That's the base salary.
Okay.
Yeah, annually. With the, and as in the existing contract, there's the opportunity for the council to do an annual review of the manager. And there's also the opportunity for the council to increase that salary in the future if, if you so desire. I think that hits the highlights.
All right. Thank you. Any members of council have any questions, comments?
Yes.
Go ahead.
You know, I'd like to, to begin by saying, as a member of the town council, my responsibility is to the residents of Florence. We're the stewardess of the town. The contract with the town manager is to protect and benefit the town as well as the town manager. We entered into a contract with manager two and a half years ago, and now proposed extension has some major changes to that agreement. I would propose three changes to the agreement, and those are the Section 3 compensation, Section 9 severance, and Section 10, 11, performance valuation. The proposal extension of an increase to $151,329. That's, the original contract was $130,000, and it was raised to $136,500 last year. The, the increase is intent, as Cliff has explained here, to try to get our town manager at a midpoint salary range with other Penale County managers. I admired and applaud the work that went into this, but I think there's a problem with trying to adopt this artificial range. When the town negotiated the current contract with the manager, the staff, and the manager, and the town council agreed to a salary we felt was fair to the town and fair to the candidate. We looked at these salaries for neighboring towns and experience of the candidate. We discussed the disparity between Florence and other Penale County towns, and the various job responsibilities and expectations. I think most of our residents realize how unique Florence is. I do not see any change in our circumstances in the past two and a half years that would justify a 10.8% salary increase. Our town manager is well within the range of the other towns. I see no issue in setting a goal to bring our salaries in range to comparable neighbors. I think we should do this on an incremental basis, based on merit and other factors. The proposed, the proposal is a $14,829 or a 10.8% raise. I believe the town manager deserves a raise, and as do all good performing employees. However, the town compensation package suggests 5% top, for, top performers. I would therefore suggest a 5% increase in base salary of $6,840 to a base salary of $143,340, to follow the compensation guidelines used by all employees.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to-
Wait, 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 before we make a motion, before we make a motion, I just want to open it up.
Okay.
Okay. Councilmember Hawkins?
Well, we've, we've discussed this. This isn't any different than what, what we've already discussed. I, I think it's a little late in the game to be wanting to renegotiate this.
Well, this is the only time that we can renegotiate it, council. The other discussions were in executive session. We aren't allowed to talk about that.
Well, all I'm saying, okay, whatever. You go ahead and make your motion then.
Councilmember Wall? Obviously, Mr. Anderson has prepared his statements, which I respect, of course, but I would like to add that I support the town manager contract as it was submitted. During the past three years, our town manager has demonstrated what I believe are outstanding capabilities, service, and commitment to the town. The town has significantly improved in many areas due to his leadership, and that was demonstrated in the May email that we received that outlined that significant body of, of improvement and leadership. I believe the proposed contract is fair and reasonable. And just to address Mr. Anderson's comments, first of all, termination for cause doesn't require a severance package. And it is my understanding the terms for salary and severance are usual and customary when compared to similar positions. A performance review is included in the proposed contract, and in fact, was recently conducted in an executive session. The manner and form of that review is and should be at the discretion of the majority of the council. As I said, I support the town manager contract as submitted.
Well, now I'd like to clarify something here. I didn't say that we agreed to this. I said we have discussed it, and we were given this, and we've had plenty of time to review it. Anyway, but, you know, make, I think with all the projects that we've accomplished and, and the, the direction the town's been going under his management, the streamlining that we have done, it's just, I, I think we're very lucky to have him, and I think he's well worth this contract.
I just wanted to add, I echo what Karen said. I think that Mr. Billingsley has added so much value to this town, and I know one of John's major concerns is obviously the compensation increase. I think it's important to note that the market comparison that we're putting him up against is the same one we put our employees up against, that we put our council up against. And so those, those adjustments that needed to be made to those employees are something that we've been analyzing and making sure that we're on point with. So I think it's, the 10.8% base increase is fair. In the same situation for our employees, that it should be same for, for Mr. Billingsley.
I'm just looking at everybody. I want to make sure anybody who wants to speak has an opportunity to speak.
I'm finished.
Councilmember Galen, do you have anything? Okay. Vice Mayor Warridge?
I, I agree with everybody on this end.
Okay. Mr. Billingsley, would you like to say anything?
Wow, I'm a little bit taken off guard by you asking me. Political theater is always kind of, kind of fun for somebody in my position, but it's not as much fun when they're talking about you. And I've just had to come to grips with that reality. It's been an absolute pleasure serving the town of Florence, the residents. Two councils now, going to be a third here in the, in the near future. I've had some fun jobs in my life. I've had some really interesting experiences where I've learned a lot, but I've never had the experience that I've had in Florence. The diversity of our council, the engagement that we have with the citizenry, the challenges and opportunities to succeed, the quality of the staff that we have here, and the overall nature of the work environment is, is special. Florence is special. It's a special place. It's a special job. It's been a pleasure for me for over two and a half years to be able to serve in that capacity, and I hope to be able to continue to serve in that capacity.
I will add one additional comment, that Mr. Billingsley inherited an excellent staff, so everybody has bumped it up a notch, so they work well together. And, and we're all better off for it. I didn't want to give you all the credit, Brent. How little help Rabies around you.
I just want to clarify, this is not my personal critique of the po, the performance of our town manager. I think he's done a good job. I think he knows that. He's taught us all a lot. I just think this is, compared to the other raises that we gave staff, this is out of, out of range, but.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the entering into an employment agreement with the town manager. Brent Billingsley?
I'll second.
Okay. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Do you think we can hold off on this one?
Ms. Garcia, can we hold off on the Q and building, or is this a decision that needs to be discussed this evening?
I would love to bring it back at the next meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to table this item until next week. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Is it next week, or, or the 30th?
I'll bring it back at the first meeting in August.
Thank you. First meeting in August.
Well, we're having a meeting on the 30th, aren't we?
It's a special meeting.
It's a special meeting, and just for the public's sake, we advertise that our regular meetings will be handled on the first and third meeting of the month. And I want people to know that if they have interest, to please come and attend.
Okay.
All right. Chris, I'm going to let you read this one.
You want me to read it?
Item E, Resolution Number 1672-18, Discussion Approval Disapproval of a Resolution of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, approving the purchase of right-of-way for the roadway project T08 and T09, and approving and ratifying the related temporary construction easements and letter of agreement necessary for the project. Mr. Chris Alice will be presenting.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. So T08 and T09 is our Florence Gardens Phase 4, Phase 5 project. As part of that project, as we were working through the engineering, as well as 750 East Hilo project, was starting their reviews for their building permit, we both identified a lack of right-of-way within those project limits, essentially right to the north of their project. There was an intent to dedicate right-of-way, but it was never done. We did our legal research. We hired a surveyor. They provided us with all the legal exhibits and the descriptions, and the town does not have right-of-way on there. The town has negotiated in good faith with the property owner to purchase that. Now, whereas typical, as of a development were to occur, full-on construction, they would dedicate that right-of-way. This project really didn't meet that criteria. They were merely doing a, what would be a TI or a tenant improvement. They asked the town to purchase that right-of-way. Again, myself and the town manager agreed to purchase that right-of-way from them in good faith. We did a comparative market analysis for that property with an independent realtor, and it was assessed at $2 per square foot. That assessment is in the council packet. So for the entire 3,223 square feet, we are purchasing six, for a purchase price of Are there any questions about this purchase of right-of-way?
Any questions? All right. With that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1672-18, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penale County, Arizona, approving the purchase of right-of-way for roadway project 08 and T09, and approving and ratifying the related temporary construction easement and letter agreement necessary for the project.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Billingsley, manager's report.
This poor guy that I'm dragging forward is our newest employee.
I really wish that we would have, you know, kind of started. I feel kind of bad. You guys sat the whole meeting.
His name is James Allen. I don't know if any of you know James, but I had a whole little speech prepared, and he just said something that trumped it all. He says, "I believe I'm one of two people that have been in this room tonight that were actually born in Florence at the Florence Hospital." Him and, and Tom Rankin. So we're very lucky to have James. He's been with Penale County for over 10 years, and they're building Safety Division. He has eight industry certifications. He's, he's a local guy, graduate of Coolidge High School, if I recall, and congratulations, James, but welcome, please help us welcome James Allen to, as our newest employee and as our building official, a very key position for us.
Mr. Allen, come say a few words.
Good evening, Madam, Madam Mayor and the councilmembers. Like I said, I'm from the area. I'm born and raised in the area. I reside outside of Florence area and Valley Farms. So I'm pretty, I'm also a business owner in the town. I have the car washed. So I have a lot of roots in the area, relatives as well, so I've, I'm very excited about the position, the opportunity. It's, I'm glad to be able to finally make it to, to put back into the community in, in someplace that I have connections with. Like I said, I've been with the county for quite a while, and it's just a great opportunity, and I appreciate the opportunity for it.
Well, welcome to the Town of Florence as an employee, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Becky said add her to the list, born at Florence Hospital.
What's all that about?
But it don't matter.
Welcome.
All right. Department reports. Does any member of council have questions regarding the department head reports? All right, guys, I'm really sorry, but I have a lot. We're going to start with Mr. Hughes. I'm kidding. I have nothing. You guys did a great job. All right. Call to the public. Is there anybody in the public that would like to say anything?
I want to thank you for allowing me to speak tonight, speak my, what I think is right for Florence. The one thing I would suggest to you is when you're taking a look at that north-south corridor, tonight you had the opportunity to, to start something because of MAG. If you take a look at MAG, they are really going for transportation due to the fact coming out of Mexico to bring up the produce and stuff like that, not only passengers. Why not take a look at putting that north-south corridor and working with that, that railroad, making sure that you have enough right-of-way on that, so that in the future, a rail line can run here to the East Valley? Because if you take a look at that map that was presented to you, then going to the East Valley, it goes to Quink Creek right into Phoenix, going by Apache Junction and Mesa, big area. So you might want to take a look at that and direct your staff to be taking a look at that too, because there's money available through MAG for these studies on rails. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Is there anybody- Thank you. All right. Is there anybody else that would like to speak at this time? And closing call to the public, call to the council for current events only. Councilmember Hawkins.
I have nothing this evening.
Councilmember Anderson?
I have, excuse me, I have a couple of things. One, Chris wasn't here when I brought this up at the last meeting, or maybe two meetings ago, but I've got compliments from people in the garden about the street constructions out there. I just wanna pass that on to you and attaboy. Another thing I wanted to bring up was we had a fire in Parkside, Fourth of July, and I wanna compliment our fire department on their excellent performance. We had a lot of comments from the residents out there. They did a good job. Now, for the bad things that I've heard, though, we had a rain last week, and we had a lot of flooding. You know, it sort of bothers me when I go downtown and the businesses downtown have to sandbag the other front doors. I also understand that the windmill got flooded also. So, I'd like for the town to start looking at what can we do about that? How can we, I mean, storm drains or diversions or something, but how do we get that water off of Main Street? And how do we protect the windmill? So, those are the two items I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Wal?
I was just gonna ask if Ms. Garcia could share the dates for the public presentations on the permanent base adjustment.
One of them is tomorrow at two-thirty at the Sun City Ballroom. I was just giving you a minute to get the rest of them. I only know the one, 'cause it popped up.
Next one's this Thursday at Parkside.
Six-thirty PM.
She's looking.
We don't wanna confuse the public.
Six o'clock, Parkside on Thursday, the nineteenth. I will be there at five-thirty setting up, if anyone wants to come early.
Oh, thank you. And we also have one in Caliente.
Thirty-first in Caliente, eight forty-five in the mañana.
I would just like to encourage our citizens to attend one of those so that they can attend a measure that will be on the ballot in August, and I plan to attend those meetings and would be happy to provide my perspective on that measure.
And if councilmembers have any other suggested places, please let us know. Do you have Florence Gardens on a Saturday morning? 'Cause you're gonna get a full house for donuts and coffee. I love donuts and coffee, Fralile. You don't know that. Councilmember Galen?
I don't have anything.
Councilmember Larson?
Two things I wanted to ask. I've been asked by multiple residents about meet the candidates. Does anybody know where they're meeting, or if they're having any type of other discussions publicly where people can get an opportunity to meet them?
I believe there's one on the twenty-fifth at Caliente I saw advertised.
Correct.
Do you know what time that would be?
Evening.
Sorry?
The twenty-fifth at six PM.
Six PM, all right. And I also just wanted to extend my thanks out to Tom Rankin and also to the public, that we actually value what you have to say. We value if you have opinions on how things are running. We want to hear the feedback. I think it's really important that people, regardless of their past experience, have a say and that they're able to come bring their concerns to us as well as their helpful input. So, I just wanted to say thank you.
All right. And Vice Mayor Woolridge?
I don't have anything to add tonight. That would be of any substance.
All right. I'd like to thank everybody who came out to the meeting. We are accomplishing a lot in the town of Florence, and we are continuing to move in a positive direction. Thank you to everybody who participated in the meeting. We are going to be adjourning into a lengthy executive session with the aim time of eleven PM for release. With that, we need a motion.
Make a motion. We adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. We're gonna take a five-minute break between now and meeting time.
Vote. We vote on that motion?
All in favor?
Aye.